Good evening, I'd like to reconvene City Council Success Agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting right now 7:07 PM Wednesday, July 27, 2022. Roll call please.
Thank you. Mayor Tom?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Here.
Councilmember Do?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you so much. Next, we have salute to the flat will be Councilmember Tai Do and in location will be City Attorney.
Please raise your hand with your heart again. Bless relation to the flag of United States of America. Two way Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and conduct the city's business. We ask that you be here and help us enable in our ability to make wise decisions and to hear the people and to act on behalf of what's best for this community. Commit the evening to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Do and City Attorney. Next, we have City Attorney close section report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There were three items on the on the closed session. Each one of them were discussed. There was direction given by the council and there's nothing further to report.
You so much. Next, we have expert communication. I see none. And City Clerk report please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to continue inviting the members of the community to please check out our current vacancies on our various committees and commissions by visiting our city website. Also nomination period is open and closes on Friday, August 12th. Also, please visit our website. And just for the record, there were late communication items related to ecomments, public comments that were submitted as well as an agenda item 5.3 update. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. Next, we have our City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the community. National Parks and Recreation Month continues with another movie night tomorrow with a special showing of Sing 2. There will be a pre-movie activities with food trucks at 6:30 and the movie will start at dusk. And that's going to be over at the Sunken Gardens. Next week on Tuesday, rather, Tuesday, August 2nd, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM over at the Target Target Parking Lot, sorry echoing a little, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM over at the Target Parking Lot on 16422 Beach Boulevard. We'll have our Westminster PD hosting National Night Out. That will be with, it'll be, they have food, games and activities, agency vehicles, more demonstrations and other members of the community out there. So please join us in supporting our police department. And then Thursday, August 4th, we'll have our next summer concert, which features Neon Nation. It's an 80s tribute band. Concert starts at 6:00 PM. And again, we'll have food trucks for that as well. And that's over at the Civic Center Sunken Gardens over here at the, behind, behind this building. And so details for those events can be found on the city's website as well as social media. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you so much for your report. Next, we have special presentation. We have presentation of matter what to Westminster Police Officer Claire Tran.
So before, before I invite the council up just to, to highlight Officer Tran. So Mothers Against Drunk Drivers or the MAD program. They honor, they honor law enforcement officers each year for their extraordinary efforts in taking impaired drivers off the road. And the city's Century Award is presented to any law enforcement officer who arrests 100 or more impaired drivers. In this particular case, between January 1st of 2021 and December 31st, 2021. On July 14, 2022, our Officer Claire Tran was awarded the Century Award by MAD for arresting 144 impaired drivers. She began her career with the Westminster Police Department in July of 2017 and is currently assigned to the Traffic Division. Officer Tran represents the top of the class in her efforts to stop impaired drivers down the road of destruction. Impaired driving is a choice that is not only a crime, but it's responsible for hundreds of serious traffic collisions. The Westminster PD and the City of Westminster were proud of Officer Tran and commend her for her efforts in keeping the streets of Westminster safe and free from impaired drivers. So if you will join me in congratulating Officer Tran. Has a couple of words?
I just wanted to add to that, that Officer Tran also has a job in patrol and those 144 DUI drivers that are endangered to the community were taken off the road in addition to her answering normal calls for service and everything else she does. So it's one heck of an accomplishment. Did you want to say a few words?
No. They never do.
Officer Tran, congratulations. Congratulations.
Alright, so we're good. So next, we have oral communication.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a time that the members of the public may come forward and address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda or not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Any person wishing to address, the council will be, has filled out a speaker card and we will be contacting you to come forward and speak.
So now I'd like to open oral communication.
First speaker is Albert Lu. Please come forward.
My name is Albert Lu. I am a construction plan designer as well as a homeowner here in the City of Westminster. My property is located here in 15th Street, just a couple, a few walks from here. The property has a history of coenforcements since 2015 from the previous owner. And it's still going on, it's still an open case. I just bought the property not too long ago and in the process to getting the permit to remodel the home and hopefully bring the home to the current code and in compliance and consistent with the neighborhood, especially it's close to the City Hall here. And when I approached the Planning Department with my proposal to build an additional ADU as well as an SB9 unit, which allows by state law, and the Planning Department denied my case just because there's a local ordinance from the City of Westminster that only allow either the ADU or the SB9. But according to the state law, which I have the City Clerk to hand to you, on page six, it say very clearly, and then I highlighted that, it say that local agency, or another word, the City of Westminster must allow in addition to the ADU, the SB9 unit. So in short, the, the local ordinance is contradicting with the state law. So I'm just going to bring my case here to see if the council has any comments on the, the denying of my case.
Yes, I really appreciate your comment and really thank you for your time for having here and raise your concern. However, our City Manager or our staff will have a meeting with you probably tomorrow morning or.
Staff will contact you.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Michael Tillsley.
Good evening. Thank you for seeing me. My name is Michael Tillsley. I live at 7721 Benton Avenue in Westminster. And I, I've been there since 1995 when I bought my home there. One of the reasons we are coming tonight is we're having issues with homeless people behind the property. We're also having issues with Walmart and Costco. And I just want to go over a few points with you. I have spoken with Vice Mayor Manzo and he came to my house this week and we, we had a conversation and I'm sure he's informed you guys. The problem is I've been in with Caltrans. I've got a hold of Nathan Abler, who's the Public Information Office with Caltrans District 12. And they've cleaned all the storm drain out. They've got all rid of all the bulwashes that were five feet high. And they've really done a good job cleaning it up. The problem is the fences both ends are damaged or nonexistent. So the homeless people keep coming back. So all we, I feel they're doing is spinning the wheels. So number one, I noticed today that on Hoover, they fixed the fence. They repaired the chain link fencing. The, the fencing that's of concern belongs to the property of Westminster Gateway, which Walmart and Costco lease. Their boundary wall that goes all the way from the residence, all the way up to Beach Boulevard. There's about 50 yards just completely rotten with the sprinklers. And there's six foot holes and I gave, I gave the Vice Mayor showed him pictures of the holes. So the homeless are coming in there and then in camping, they can walk all the way down to Hoover and that's where they're camping. And, and if you look where their boundary fence goes, it shortens up near the freeway. There's, there's a fence that needs to go north and south to stop people coming from Beach. So they can't go any farther. And if they put a fence there, Walmart fixed their fence, problem solved. That's a homeless problem and that is the issue. And I'm speaking on behalf of a bunch of people who live on Benton. Can you guys live on Benton or Jasperson? Raise your hands. So these are some of the neighbors. And we've had meetings in, in the past. We had an attorney at the last meeting. And I don't want to go into a lawsuit, but if I don't see anything happening, I feel we need to go in a lawsuit with Westminster City. We need to go with Costco and we need to go with Walmart. The other problem with Costco and Walmart, I was involved in 1997 when the driving converted to Walmart. And there's people here tonight that were with me in 97. And we built, we had a deal that the city ordinance, no loading and unloading between 9:00 PM at night and 8:00 AM in the morning. That is happening all the time. They're banging containers, waking people up. And it's only happened since Costco was there. So I'm wondering if anybody ever told Costco.
Hello, sir. I think that our City Staff will contact you probably tomorrow or maybe later. Yes.
And I, I know, I know that it's been talked about before. Even Vice Mayor says he's even called up and complained about the noise. And I'm sure most of the people up here. So it's not being enforced. I mean, it's a city ordinance. It needs to be enforced. Just like the, the light on the sign, that's supposed to go out at 9:00 PM. That's another city ordinance that was discussed here in 1997. So that's why Westminster City is going to become involved in the lawsuit because you're not enforcing the, the city ordinances. And finally, my last thing, I've got a minute left. I know, I know you guys have been going over a monument thing. I don't know the ins and outs. I don't want to get involved in it. But I'm from England, as you can probably tell, and this city was named after Westminster in England. So I think what I'd like, I'm Homsick, just like the Vietnamese are, so I'd like a castle. Is it okay if we build a castle in Westminster somewhere? Now, who on there thinks this is the stupidest thing you've heard tonight? I'll start it off. I think it's a stupid idea. Do all you guys agree? It's about as stupid as the monument. When you got no money, why are we spending money? I just watched the last town meeting you had on TV a couple of nights ago. And you spent a amount of time on talking about where's it going to go, where's it going to go? They asked the mayor to make a decision. The mayor down there said, well, I think we need to give it back to the committee. Let the committee come up with advice.
Time's up.
And we'll, you know, we'll continue. And, and the, the city.
Your time's up, sir.
So why did, why did we let the committee make a decision? When that's what you guys are paid for. We don't need you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Salvan Pham.
Good evening. I have a question for the mayor, Vice Mayor, and the two City Council members who are Vietnamese descent. Did you know that there are many, many homeless who are Vietnamese descent around the Asian Garden Mall? Can you solve this homeless problem? So I, I would like to hear first of all from the four member of the City Council who are of Vietnamese descent.
Yes, so I really appreciate your comment, but this is a time for you to raise your concerns and we're here to listen to your concerns.
So if not now, then when?
So this is the time that it's all communication. So this is the public's time to communicate with the council members, but they are not allowed to engage in conversation because it's not an item on the agenda.
Because I'm doing this because I see that the City of Westminster, especially around the Asian Garden Mall, there has never been so many homeless people like there are now. Because the Asian Garden Mall is one of the symbol of the city. And the symbol of this city is being crowded by homelessness. Why are you not helping to solve this problem with, with, with the homeless?
Once again, I want to thank you for your concerns and if you want to have a meeting with me or with any other City Staff, we will schedule that meeting. But I think this is, this is not a time for us to respond.
I have another question. So on July 5th, I asked a police officer who is of Vietnamese descent whether Trita or Marytar is still the mayor of the City of Westminster? And the answer was that he was no longer the mayor of the City of Westminster. A Caucasian is now the mayor of the City of Westminster.
Oh, hello, sir. I'm not, I don't, I don't do not know anything about it, but I'm still here. That means I'm still the mayor.
So at that time, I then make an inquiry with the reporter, with Do Young, the reporter of Viettel News. And I was told by him that the officer was wrong, Marytar to be the mayor of the City of Westminster. Alright, I have my last question here.
Thank you.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
The next speaker is Hillary Wong.
I'm Hillary Wong.
My name is Hillary Wong. I would like to send my greeting to the mayor, Vice Mayor, the entire City Council member as well as City Staff. request that the City Council allow the country monument to be placed at Freedom Park. This is a significant statue and for it to be placed at Freedom Park. That would give the tourists as well as us an opportunity to visit that, that monument when, when the tourists visit the City of Westminster.
I know that the mayor and Vice Mayor and then the entire City Council work very hard
for the city or they care deeply about the city. And because of that, I sincerely request that you approve Freedom Park as the location for the monument. That would honor the memory as well as the sacrifice made by the people who make the ultimate sacrifice. There are five general being honored at that park. They took their own life because they could not, they would not live under the communist regime. And so now if we have the monument there, they would have their comrade in arm as well, their friend and fellow countrymen to be honored, to have each other there. And I'm going to ask you to give me a second to turn around so I can address the audience.
Mayor, you're supposed to be addressed to the council.
I'm making that request because there are now audience tonight.
I want to sing that you be there to make it happen. You be there to make it happen.
I, I want to address the former servicemen in the audience because I want to thank them for the sacrifice that they made. But I would also want them to know that there were people who were not, who are no longer with us because they made this ultimate sacrifice. So in a sense, we are lucky and so we should help the monument at Freedom Park honor the memory as well as this sacrifice made by those.
I'm very grateful, I'm very grateful.
Once again, I would like to thank the mayor, Vice Mayor, the entire City Council member, City Staff as well as the audience here, especially former service member. And I would like to ask that you open your heart and allow the monument to be placed at Freedom Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is my Nguyen.
Nguyen has requested that she be allowed to read her entire address to the council before interpreter and traffic.
Kính chào thị trưởng tại Đức Tế và phó thị trưởng Carlos Manzol cùng các nghị viên Kim Bực Ly Hồ, Charlie Nguyễn Mạnh Chí, Tài Đỗ cùng các thành viên trong hội đồng thành phố Westminster. Kính thưa quý vị, tôi tên là Xuân Mai Nguyễn, cư ngụ tại Orange County. Đến nay tôi vẫn đi làm đã bốn mươi năm qua và vẫn đóng thuế hàng năm. Nói đến tượng đài chiến thắng tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị. Chúng ta đã là con cháu của các kĩu quân nhân trong quân lực Việt Nam Cộng Hòa. Tôi đã ngập ngùi, đau xót, thương tiếc cho cha ông, chú anh. Chú anh của chúng ta cùng các đồng đội quân nhân Hoa Kỳ đã đổ biết bao xương máu, đã hy sinh thân mình trong trận đánh để cắm cờ trên cổ thành Quảng Trị, giành lại chiến thắng oai phong, lấy lừng. Kính thưa thị trưởng và phó thị trưởng, những kĩu quân nhân có mặt ngày hôm nay, họ ngồi ở đây trong thân thể của các anh cũng mang đầy vết thương tích chiến tranh. Chúng ta là con cháu, hãy vinh danh những người chiến sĩ, quân lực Việt Nam Cộng Hòa cùng đồng minh Hoa Kỳ. Còn sống sót, chúng ta phải tôn trọng, tôn kính họ. Hãy tri ân và vinh danh các chiến sĩ, quân lực Việt Nam Cộng Hòa để các kĩu quân nhân, các binh chủ là niềm vui suốt cuộc đời của họ còn lại trên đất nước Hoa Kỳ tự do này. Một lần nữa, chúng tôi khẩn thiết, van nài xin hội đồng thành phố để thể hiện được và xứng đáng với sự hy sinh của toàn quân dân, các binh chủ của chính ta có mặt ngày hôm nay. Tượng đài tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị cần có vị trí xứng đáng, quan trọng và một nơi an ninh, an toàn như tượng đài chiến sĩ Việt Mỹ ở Freedom Park. Trân trọng, kính cảm ơn thị trưởng và phó thị trưởng cùng các nghị viên, cùng các hội đồng trong thành phố Westminster. Kính cảm ơn.
Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Manzol, city council members Nguyen, Paul and Doe. My name is Xuân Mai, I am a resident of Orange County. I have been working for the last forty years and dutifully pay my tax each year. When we think or mention, when we think of the monument, the Quang Tree Monument as descendants of former military or service member of the Republic of Vietnam. I am, I can't help but to be overcome with grief and grief for the sacrifice made not only by our father but also by the, by the American allies. Numerous sacrifice was made, blood was spilled to raise that flag on the ancient citadel of Quang Tree. Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Manzol, the former military service member that are here today. They are here, their body bear the scar of war of that battle. As the descendants of those, we need to honor them as well as the, to honor the sacrifice that was made by the US ally, American ally who are still alive. We need to respect them, we need to thank them and honor them so that they would be happy for the remaining of their life, especially in this country of the free. Once again, I sincerely ask that the city council approve and allow the monument to be placed on Freedom, at Freedom Park. The location need to be a significant location, Freedom Park is that. And Freedom Park is also a safe place for the monument. So once again, thank you, mayor, vice mayor and the city council member. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Gentio.
Hello, sir, how can you speak on the mic?
Thank you, mayor, city council members and citizens of Westminster for allowing me to speak here today. I'll give you a little bit of my background in hopes that you all listen to what I have to say. Most of my family members and I have lived in the city of Westminster for over fifty years. I've owned a striving business here for ten years. I also worked as a law enforcement officer for the Orange County Sheriff's Department for over twenty-five years. Up until June 1st, 2022, I did what most people did, which is complain about local politics while doing nothing to help solve the problem. Well, the time is now that I stand up and be heard. I'm here today to talk about Measure SS, the one percent sales tax. Honestly, I haven't been following the bouncing ball on this topic, but after listening to hours and hours of debate over a monument and very little talk about Measure SS, I took the time to research the impact it will have on our police department. On Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, I met with two ranking police officers of the Westminster Police Department. During our conversation, I learned that the department is down five or six sworn positions, multiple staff and multiple support staff. Not wanting to be left behind in the rubble of a pending bankruptcy, several senior officers have plans or have already left the department and heading towards safer and more stable police agencies. Now, being a retired law enforcement officer myself, I know how important it is for a young record police officer to be guided by more experienced veteran officers. In short, this will help with their confidence and decision-making. This will lead to less lawsuits and community confidence. My first thought was maybe the city council is setting up a deal with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and take over the police functions of our city if the measure wasn't put on the ballot. After all, it is the biggest police agency in the county, and I've been hearing this rumor since I was in high school. But don't get me wrong, I love everything about the Orange County Sheriff's Department. They're a great department, I have nothing bad to say about it. But I'm a Westminster resident and I want to keep our department intact and fully staffed. So on July 14th, 2022, I went and spoke to the Orange County Sheriff, Don Barnes, and spoke to him in length about Measure SS and the impact it will have on our police department. He and I, he and I were in harmony on every issue related to Measure SS and the effects it will have on our officers. He gave me his word, he has no interest in ever discussing the takeover of our police department, even if the city was to go bankrupt. So where does that leave us? Well, if you fail to put Measure SS on the November ballot, our underpaid, understaffed and underappreciated law enforcement officers and support staff will be gutted, meaning less patrol officers, no staffing to combat the homelessness nor the mentally ill. I understand you don't want to be the person to raise your hand in support of higher taxes because you don't want to get hammered during your next election period as being the person who supported higher taxes. But it's now time for all five of you to stand up as one, to be brave, to do what is right for the people of Westminster. We, the people of Westminster, are no longer asking, we are demanding Measure SS be put on the November ballot. Let us decide the fate and the direction of our city. Do not allow my family, friends and neighbors to fall victim to acts of violence over your pride of being elected to state office and mayor of our city. It is my humble opinion that if you decide not to place a measure on the ballot, it will be a political suicide. Now, council member, member Doe, Mr. Doe, you're a brother law enforcement officer. You know they hit the department will take if the measures not passed. I'm personally asking you to stand up today and make a commitment that you will convince your colleagues to put Measure S up for a vote before August 12th deadline. We have sixteen days. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Richard Corret. Oh, Corillo, I'm sorry, Richard Corillo.
For hearing us today, I'm one of the neighbors of Mike on Benton Street. And just confirming that all he said is true, we have nothing but trouble. They broke into my house, vandalized my room and everything. We got grandkids, you know, got a new baby from eight months up to twenty. And, you know, there's, nothing's being done. The police come out, tell them to leave, and they say, "We're not leaving," and that's the end of it. The police go and they stay. We don't know what to do. You know, the fences are completely demolished, there's four-foot sections taken out by Walmart. The bottom is all decayed and rusted from the growth of ice plant. And then all the walls, or the fences, I rather, are cut with bolt cutters. More than, I don't know how many of them have bolt cutters, but they put locks chains and they're in there tearing them up. And you know, the other day we had explosion, three explosions that rocked the houses like bombs. And it's just getting out of hand. We need to build those fences up, and Walmart covered that wrought iron fence with a ten-foot fence and then one, sorry, one to go into the freeway fence. And they had to put maybe Constantine wire or something up there. And I suggest if they do build the walls, have it smooth, that way they can't climb up there, you know, like a racquetball court. But we need to be, you know, assured that we're gonna have all these things taken care of. You know, we got kids, I got neighbors that are invalids, they can't, I mean, they can't, they're bedridden. And so they can't do anything if somebody breaks in there. And you know, if you've never been broken into, it's an awful feeling. You know, see your stuff thrown all over the house and I had to go buy a new door, sliding door. It cost me four hundred and eighty dollars. And the police officer had told me, "Why don't you turn it into insurance?" I have a five hundred dollar deductible, so I lose. But we need, we need something done really bad because this is just getting out of hand. Okay, that's it, I think Mike covered everything, so thank you for your time.
Shaffer Mangalasilasupis, Shaffer?
I am the same number as Mike, become the, through the same problem, you know. That's all, I, I come, that's it, thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Harrison.
I would just repeat, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Manzol, the rest of the city council and staff. The only correct choice before the city for placement of the Quang Tree Monument is Westminster Memorial Park. Westminster should not be burdened with the maintenance of sixty-five hundred per year, additional liability for repairs and replacements and damage due to vandalism, liability for personal injury and lawsuits, and an increase in Westminster Police Department surveillance. It is ridiculous to expect the nonprofit to continue to be liable. They are still soliciting funds to build. The nonprofit was resurrected from the dead, and as soon as the monument is constructed, it'll be dead again. There is no annual perpetual stream of income for nonprofits to be paying costs. The Quang Tree Monument should not be on public land where this over-the-top cartoonish monstrous, monstyrity does not represent the American city of Westminster, especially in Freedom Park, as it is too large, would displace the holiness and sanctuary of the Vietnam War Memorial there. Almost a hundred percent of all public comments by non-Quang Tree committee members and relatives are opposed to putting the Quang Tree Monument on public land. Our gutless government let the Vietnamese down and abandoned Vietnam, where many have apologized. It's not the basic American soldier that let Vietnam down. And yet the Quang Tree Committee has created further division between Americans and Vietnamese where according to the committee, America did not have much of a contribution. The fifteen-foot bronze monument of a soldier from the former South Vietnam and American soldier standing side by side portrays unity, cooperation and brothers in arms in fighting for the cause of freedom. The monument there is classic and artistic. The immediate surrounding grounds establish a proper ambience for those men and women who served and died. Fifty-eight thousand plus Americans, three hundred thousand plus South Vietnamese, five thousand plus others, Koreans, Taiwanese, Australians, New Zealanders, and those not accounted for. The American and South Vietnamese flag on the Vietnam War memorial is all that we need, representing all countries and all battles, including the Quang Tree Battle. Westminster Memorial Park has graciously accepted placement. Already in the park, the Boat People Monument, and not mentioned much at the last meeting, a very important prestigious eighty-one airborne grave marker. The Quang Tree Monument belongs there. It should be... Excuse me, the Boat People and the airborne are there, and they're wandering souls. They should be combined with the Quang Tree Monument, memorizing all that died at Quang Tree. It was presented the Westminster Memorial is not convenient and accessible, which is so far from the truth. I go there every day of the week, early morning, the late evening, and take people there. It was presented that donors were promised the monument will be in the city park. Location was to be determined. Promises should have been not made as a depiction and display and a placement had not been accepted and approved by the city council. Sid Goldstein Freedom Park is named after a great American World War II hero. Sid earned the Distinguished Service Cross, the second highest honor in the US Army, just below the Congressional Medal of Honor. Placing the Quang Tree Monument in Sid Goldstein's Freedom Park for a small coalition of military branches, this is not a complete community project, there's many people opposed. Creates a graveyard of Vietnamese monuments, changing the landscape of the city of Westminster, Vietnamizing Sid Goldstein Freedom Park in Westminster. All of Westminster is not represented. Please respect the citizens of Westminster, all Vietnam veterans everywhere, keeping the ambience of the Freedom Park and keeping public lands for the community. Westminster Park is the right choice. Council members gave their word. The Quang Tree Monument should not be placed in Freedom Park. Thank you.
Next speaker, next speaker is Conrad Gomez.
Hello, council, council members. My name is Conrad Gomez, president of Vietnam Veterans America Chapter seven, five, six. Also, I'm one of the state directors for Vietnam Veterans America for the state of California, including twenty-seven chapters with about sixty-seven thousand membership. And we've been, I've been talking to them about the ongoing issues with the Quang Tree Monument and also now it's being diverted to, hopefully not, it will not be diverted to Freedom Park. I have a flyer here that I had emailed all of you last night, plus the city, I gave one for each one of you. And I need for you to review it. And what it states basically is the memorial grounds at Freedom Park are for the South Vietnamese and the Americans, the Koreans, the Thais, all the Allies who fought in the war. And, and this, and this was from Mayor Frank Fry himself. So if you want to keep adding more monuments to Freedom Park, you're taking away from what the original thought process was. The original process was that we honor all. Well, in the last four or five years, we've had two monuments, I mean, more, I guess they would be memorial pieces put there, the generals and the naval battle. I don't see any US statues, I don't see any Korean statues. Are, if this was supposed to be for South Vietnam and all the Allies, then why aren't there more of the Allies showing us great support and sacrifice that we went through? and sacrifice that we went through? Wasn't 58,000 Americans enough? You know, plus the ones that are still dying today at the BA local hospitals from that war? And that are suffering still from PTSD and everything else, Agent Orange? And, and I see a group that basically wants to say Vietnamese, Vietnamese, Vietnamese only. I know the mayor, I believe, if I'm correct, you worked on that project. You know, with Craig Mandeville, you know, back in the day, and he talked very highly of you. So I don't see why it's being, why we're trying to cram so much into that park. You've got 24 parks in your city. Four of them are, no, three of them are smaller than Freedom Park. So there's 20 other parks you can use. So don't consecrate that holy piece of property. I've already been getting, uh, verbiage from some of the veterans that do come down from Santa Barbara and other areas, and they're saying, "Why is there just Vietnamese sculpture up here? Why, where's the ones for the U.S.?" And we have to explain to them, "Well, you know, these were the five generals or the five or six generals that committed suicide, this and that." This other one on the naval battle with the communists, I don't get how that works in. But at the same time, when are you gonna build one for the U.S.? Why not? You know, like I said, if it wasn't for the U.S., a lot of things would not have gone right for the South Vietnamese. And we all know by now, and even the Quang Tri Committee members acknowledge the fact that without the U.S. involvement in the Second Battle of Quang Tri, South Vietnamese military would have lost that battle like they lost the first one. So, uh, it's really kind of sad that you want to cram everything in there. It's not a tourist center. It's a Mecca. It's a very holy place. You need to quit putting, cramming more Vietnamese battles in there. And that seems to be what the intent is, and you're getting away from the intent from what Mayor Fry had said. So take a look at it, read it, and really understand what your responsibilities are. No more monuments or anything at Freedom Park. That's it. It's plain and simple. And I do, like I said, we're, uh, I know I go to a meeting this coming, uh, next month, and we're talking about Quang Tri. We're talking about, why are the Vietnamese just steering just their only way? Is it the Vietnamization of Freedom Park? You know, are we only gonna put Vietnamese monuments there? Thank you.
Next speaker? Tim, next speaker is Tim Hogan? Tim Hogan? Tim Hogan?
Mayor Ta, council members, city staff. Good evening. My name is Tim Hogan. I'm, I rise, I'm resident of Westminster. I rise again to speak about the tax measure. I have every expectation this council will approve the renewal of the tax measure for the November ballot. It is the proper thing to do. Indeed, a commitment to democracy requires it. The more I learn of the causes and conditions of our current city situation, the more I recognize how impossible this plight is for the five of you. You had little to do with creating the disaster, but now you must resolve it. And at the moment, the only viable path is to renew the stopgap tax measure that has served us so well these past few years. With time bought for us to act, we can approach the situation with a more measured plan, a more measured plan of attack. Perhaps what's needed is a citizen select committee, convened to bring all voices in the city together to seek the best solution to our mutual dilemma. I hope you will consider such a collaborative idea once we have shored up our circumstances. Perhaps then, with our finances on solid footing, we can continue the quest to make this city an international tourist destination. But only if we balance our budget will we forego ventures into favela tours. For if we can avoid economic straits, we need never be a pocket of misery in the midst of plenty, an anomaly that spurs curiosity rather than vested interest. Economic hardships such as staff recently outlined would alter this city beyond recall. None of us wants to see that. We could end up just another amusement park, a source of merriment and guffaws for the neighboring towns. Why, they may call us dismal land, the most hapless place on earth, especially if they persist in fostering rumors that we had a chance to redeem ourselves, but squandered it, debating the irrelevance. Oh, but what a study in contrast our little amusement park would prove. Why, yes, we'd have a main street, but the sidewalk would be permanently rolled up tight, and our tomorrow land would be closed for lack of prospects. We would, of course, still have a roller coaster, the mortgage horn, where home prices would only go down, chased by the specter of the abominable homeless man. And what could utopia have to match our ceaseless potholes and endless detours? We'd have our haunted mansion, to be sure. The mall could stand in for that. For should we slip into anything approaching bankruptcy, I suspect whatever investors are currently interested would abandon the revitalization straight away. No, I don't expect any of us to want to live through such times, especially when the antidote is so readily at hand. This is why I have every expectation the council will approve the tax measure to be included on the November ballot. Why would any of us risk ridicule for failing to do what is so simple?
The next speaker is Kenny Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Tita, Vice Mayor Colomanzo, and Council Member Cami Ho, Charlie Wimkey, and also Council Member Tito, and all Westminster City staff. I came back from taxes two days ago. I've been there for airborne red barrier reunion, and also I met with Team 162, American advisor to Vietnamese airborne division. I present the Quang Tri monument at the event, and all of them give me the good idea that monument is very good and locate it, um, historical monument to let in the Westminster City. And they also asked me that where you build, your Westminster City build the Quang Tri monument. I said, we will build at the right place and good place for this monument because it represent for, through the history at the Quang Tri City there. Almost 100% of the Vietnamese veterans, 1700 people there, they want to build and build the right, the, uh, the history and through the barrel and build in the right place and good place for the monument, that is, they want to. Even Team, American Advisor Team 162 also asked me that we want to send this message to the city of Westminster that they want to build the monument right in the good place. They asked me that. We had to do the right thing and do the, the right thing, the right way, and do it right. Do it right. That is, they told me that. And now, I am Vice Chair of Quang Tri Monument Committee. We also add that City of Westminster, please build a Quang Tri monument at the right in the good place. It is Freedom Park. So, our Vietnamese veteran and also American veteran everywhere in the United States, in the world, Australia, Europe, they also want to see the monument will be built in the right, in the good place again. Now, the depiction in the monument, we just passed approval by the Quang Tri Committee and also by the City Council of Westminster. And everything you asked us to do and had to change, I did that. I do it right. I think it is the final upgrade for the monument, depiction in the monument. And today, I hope that City Council of the Westminster City, please approve and choose the right and good place to build the Quang Tri monument. This afternoon, I received an email from Mr. Matt Glenn. They will deliver the statues on September 5. That is scheduled, we signed contract with them. I hope that, we hope that we had something to write the on time to receive the five shoulder statues from Utah and review place above of the monument base. Please, one again, we want Westminster City Council, please, to build a monument right in good place in Freedom Park. Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Mariscal.
Good evening, Deborah Mariscal, Westminster since 2000. And I apologize because I'm going to read because I have too much to say and I'll probably forget. So mayor, vice mayor, city council, city clerks, our police department, our attorneys. I really want to commend Westminster Police Department, the Orange County Fire Authority, CHP, and all of the Westminster staff who put together a fabulous safety day for our residents. So well done. Kids had a great time, lots of good questions. It was just fabulous. The only thing was missing was Paco. Would have liked to see Paco. I would like to thank and commend our city employees for putting together the music night with Queen Nation and some of the other things that are coming up pretty soon, too. I wasn't able to attend the whole thing because I have work commitments, uh, but I was able to go for a little while, and it was just fabulous to see residents out there enjoying the music and, and eating and talking and, you know, it was wonderful. I really appreciate that. That said, now, with that said, how are these things going to continue if we don't have SS on the ballot? Where's that money gonna come from? It's not, those things will cease along with plenty of other things. I'm gonna be a little bit mean here. I apologize. I don't mean to be, but I'm angry. Get over your political agenda. Quit trying to get votes, you know, for different things. Get this on the ballot, and let's just have it done. I bet a lot of you live in the nicer parts of Westminster. I don't. I live behind Honda dealer. And I've really watched that area go downhill. Really sad. Um, my husband's family's lived there since the mid-sixties. On next door, we are being compared to other cities around us. And citizens are, residents are asking, why is our city so trashy? Um, why does Fountain Valley or Huntington Beach or other cities, why do they not have all these issues? Well, because they put their foot down and they don't allow it. So, before the staff meeting, I sent an email to all of you. The attorney, city clerk, Alonzo, I sent it to you as well. Uh, we have a new encampment on beach and Garden Grove Boulevard where it's been cleared out before. This is the largest one that I have seen since I've lived here. Um, I took pictures of it from my car while I was sitting at the signal. As others have said, this needs to stop. We've gotta get something done about that. I can't walk that way anymore. I used to walk my dogs in the morning, beach to Garden Grove Boulevard, go around, you know, take different routes because it's boring going the same place. So this week on Monday, I took trash to beach, down to 13th, came back around, circled the police department and came back. There was all kinds of discarded clothing on these streets. There's a lot of broken glass. There's a lot of trash. So I went down the same route on Tuesday, and a lot of it had been picked up. So that was as far as the clothing goes. This morning, I went down trash to Newland, to Westminster, back to Monroe and come back. Here's the clothing and stuff that I picked up. I'm gonna leave that for you. I, I took dishwashing gloves because I don't know where that stuff has been. I don't know where it is, but I picked that up. But the, but the glass is still there. The trash is still there. Um, we need to do something, and I don't want to just complain. I want to do something. So that's my start. Onto another more, uh, item. The last meeting was consumed by the monument. We had a murder. Our police chief had to sit here while, while he could have been out working with our police force and other police forces to try to find that person, and thankfully, that person was found. We have spent so much time on this monument, and the division that it has caused in this city is just astronomical. I just can't even believe it. Now, I know I only have a few seconds. I did the math. That monument is about as big as this room, 1,020 square feet. I have a two-bedroom house that is 952 square feet. There is no place in Freedom Park big enough to put that thing. I know we all want respect, right? I'll give it to you. You give it back to us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kim Springer. Kim Springer?
Council, mayor, and city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Kim Springer, and my husband and I have lived in Westminster for the past 32 years. We raised our family here. The first 30 years, we've had minimal issues, but the last two years, those have been the most concerning. Where I live, where we live, we've had two slap houses, an ADU that is selling drugs and has undesirable customers all hours of the night. Petty theft is up. Homelessness is in our parks. They're using drugs in front of children. There are stolen bikes. There was the stabbing at the 76 station. I walk every day, and I see this, and it's, I would hate for my grandchildren to even be in the area. And these are just a few of my concerns. I would like to thank the Westminster Police Department for being there when we call and for all the due diligence needed in our area. The added patrol and their presence in our neighborhood truly, truly helps. The quiddness in shutting down that large slap house that was on Willow, that was amazing. I, I know Westminster Police Department was along with the SWAT and other agencies, but they did an amazing job. And the neighbors all appreciated that. It was done so quickly. And when that one got shut down, the other one that was going, it all kind of trickled down, so that one was gone. We appreciate Officer, I don't know if it's Sergeant or Officer, and I'm sorry, Aoki, for his time at our neighborhood watch meeting. The police presence at these meetings truly helps the residents feel their concerns are heard. I'm sure I'm leaving others out, but the bottom line is, we love our Westminster Police Department, and we don't want to lose any of them. Regarding the 2016 Measure SS that is due to sunset on 12/31, our financial future should be the priority right now. Nothing else makes a difference without fiscal stability. Please, please, put this measure on the ballot and let us vote. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tony Buie.
Good evening, Mayor Tita and old council members and city officers and Police Department officers. I appreciate to see all of you working hard to help the city thriving. However, first question, are we, are our city in bankruptcy yet? Yes, in the past couple months, we have spent $300,000 of the city, of taxpayer for Mayor's seat. Which three of you, Councilmember Ho, Vice Manzo, and Councilmember Do, you colluded to bring the mayor's seat so that people had to vote whether to keep on voting for a mayor. And finally, 60% of the people say, yes, we need to vote for a mayor. And now you, Councilmember Ho and Councilmember Do, you change your mind. You want to run for mayor. You were so stupid. You run, you said, don't vote for it. And now you want people to vote for you. That is hypocrite. Okay? So you, three of you colluded to cost our city more than $300,000 and make a big hole in our, make city bankruptcy in the future. And even the, the meeting here, it has been dragging for many months. Just on Quan Chi Monument, dragging last, two weeks ago, dragging from 7 o'clock until 1 o'clock. You know how much it costs our city? $10,000 every time you dragging that. And it has been for two years already. Who pay for it? That is our residents. That is our people here. This is a city not only Vietnamese, American, but also American, American and many other people. They pitch on, they pay for taxpayer. So you have to shut up and stop dragging the Quan Chi Monument. Put it at a public property if they want to have a dedication for monument. I support it, but put it at the private land. So that city don't have to pay for maintenance, don't have to pay for many other costs. Especially if the monument fall on our children, who will pay for it? Our city cannot do that, cannot pay for it. So put the monument at the pub, at the private property such as on Bonsa Avenue. There is a lot of private property there. Tell the people to put it there. So today, I have around 30 cop letter of the people who play tennis and who use Park West Park, also called Tony Lam. And last two weeks, Tidol want to put the monument, QT Quan Chi Monument there. A lot of people say, we do not want to install the monument at Park West Park or Tony Lam because it's not safe for our children to play at this park. And the monument is dangerously can fall down on our children. Please move the cute Quan Chi Monument to land of the personal property on Bonsa Avenue. That is the aspiration of the people, especially of American, American people. They are here. This is their land. We came here and we have to obey or have play with the games, with the rules that was made by our forefather, which is American who been here first. So I support Quan Chi Monument. However, you should know where to put it. Private land so that the city will not be liable to pay for any accident. Thank you very much. I will send this to the city.
The next speaker. The next speaker is Dennis Phelps.
Please, please sit down.
Dennis Phelps.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Can you please show your respect, please? Thank you.
My name is Dennis Phelps. Mayor Ta, council members, city attorney, the city manager. I just ask that you stop some of the things that you're doing back there while people are talking. Listen to what I have to say because I don't have much time to say it. And I'm only going to say it once because I'm only coming here once. And the thing is about just monument that's there in Freedom Park right now. It is sacred. I was, I was an army engineer. My friends came home cold in bags. Some of the Vietnamese Army soldiers that we fought with, they also died and they bled out. It's all red. Everything is red. But to put a bunch of stuff into a park where it has so much meaning for everybody. Are you done with your telephone? Could you listen for a moment? The thing is, there was a time in our life when being alive was very, very dangerous. And fighting for the freedom that you have now and the freedom that I wish every one of the Vietnamese people had. It made me very sad when the communists took over. It made me sad when our Congress, because of their love of the dollar, didn't back them. And that's what it's coming down to now is the love of the dollar. Everybody wanting to fill their own pocket with their decisions or whatever. And I'm going to tell you, it's all vanity. You can't take a penny with you. When you go in the casket, all the money stays right here. Everything that you try to build in this life is going to evaporate. And there's no chance of getting out of it. We come here, no choice who we come from. We come a man or a woman. We can't change what we are. Some try to tell us we can, but we can't. And then when it comes time for us to leave, we're going to go. We're going to leave, whether we want to or not. And we don't know when it will be. But in a twinkling of an eye, it'll end. And all of this arguing over putting a monument in Freedom Park is like having a fine bottle of cognac and you take a drink out of it and you pour water in to fill it back up. Then you take another drink a little later on and you pour more water in it to fill it back up. Pretty soon, all you got is a bunch of bad tasting water. And that's what's going to happen with Freedom Park. If you keep putting all kinds of distractions in it, that take away from the sacrifices that were made. I was drafted into the army, but I willingly went. And I was glad to go to Vietnam. I've done a lot of things in my life that I'm not proud of, but being a Vietnam veteran isn't one of them. But it really gets me when people want to have a statue, a monument, something to remind them of a battle that they weren't even in, that they know nothing about. Freedom has a flavor, for those who fought for it, freedom has a flavor the protected will never know. And it's just the protected, it seems like, that's fighting to get this monument put into Freedom Park with the people who fought for it. And it should be kept to where it's just the Vietnamese soldier and the military and the US military, that's what it's all about. That's what it can be about and that's what it has to be about. Because if it goes to lean one side or the other, it's going to tip over and it won't be any good for anybody. I'm just a resident of Orange County, but I was here when that monument was unveiled. And I don't know why I was, but I just turned down this street and drove up here and there was a celebration going on. And there was a reason. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. Residents are still angry over the fact this council spent almost five hours arguing over the damn Quan Chi Monument, sucking up tons of precious city resources yet again and diverting attention away from the real priorities you should be focusing on, such as the fiscal emergency that you declared twice, but have done absolutely nothing to address other than refusing to allow us to vote and keeping the current tax and saving our city. Congratulations, Officer Tran, on receiving the MATT Award. Well deserved. Item 5.1 is staff's research on short-term rentals continued from the last meeting. Airbnb has banned disruptive parties, open invite gatherings and large one-night events, and the city should do the same. We have a unique demographic that would rent STRs here, friends and family of our Vietnamese residents visiting from Vietnam or other states who wish to stay together in one home. The city should allow STRs to help grow revenue while imposing strict regulations that will lessen the concerns of residents and impacts on our neighborhoods. Item 5.2 is staff's research on commercial cannabis continued from the last meeting. Fact, there is no increase in reportable crime around legal dispensaries. Council should be, allow limited retail cannabis to help grow revenue while imposing strict regulations that will lessen the concerns of residents. Item 5.3, I question why only the internal strengths and accomplishments were included in the staff report, not the weaknesses and challenges. Apparently, the facilitator opined that only the strengths and accomplishments should be posted on the city's website, but I disagree. The city can and should be more transparent, and I guess it was added at the last minute. Residents deserve to know the weaknesses and challenges as perceived by key city staff and the city council. Item 5.6 is the amendment to the agreement with Placeworks to support implementation of the Westminster Mall specific plan, adding up to $450,000 over five years to an original $283,000 contract executed four and a half years ago, 159% increase. This amendment is backdated to July 1st, continuing that bad practice. Scope of work for this amendment includes continued technical support, stakeholder coordination, steps towards implementation, hearings, study sessions, workshops, meetings, plan reviews, interpreting code, design recommendations, meetings with applicants, crafting new amendment language and litigation support if needed, but not the environmental review, EIR. So why not? Much of the scope is work that our planning department should be doing, not an overpaid consultant. The city uses too many highly paid consultants to do basic planning department work. The original contract stated the specific plan would be done in one year plus another six to 12 months for environmental review, but here we are four and a half years later with nothing. Item 5.7 is another backdated contract amendment with Cheryl Knoll for technical and analytical services for data migration between the current Eden ERP system and the new Munis system. This project, like the mall specific plan, should have been done by now. Déjà vu, the compensation study that took almost six years. I don't know why it takes our city so long to complete projects like this, especially considering the fact we often use highly paid consultants to do regular employee work. I am sure our new leadership is finding all sorts of shell projects that have been collecting dust for years or even decades. Item 7.1 is the potential Quan Chi Monument locations again, after we endured an almost five-hour pissing match between council members at the last meeting about it. The community is sick of hearing about this damn monument and sick of council wasting so much time on it. FYI, there was no council vote promising to place it in a park. That claim and the legal threats are total bullshit. If they wrongly promised their donors that, that's on them. Community outreach, the council ignores public input with the exception of Vice Mayor Manzo. Councilman Do, read the dozens of letters and signatures from Vietnamese residents tonight against placement in Tony Lam Park. Councilwoman Ho, listen to the almost 100 comments to date against placement in Westminster Park, including those that run, run the Challenger League. You don't even bother to attend the events at that park in your district and you have no clue about the park's commitment to our disabled youth or the surrounding area. All public comments have emphatically argued against placing this thing in any city park, but four of you don't care. Staff's feasibility study already proves the only viable location is the new area of Westminster Memorial Park or on Bosa Private Land. There should, would never be any city resources used to maintain or repair it and zero liability to the city for bodily injury, et cetera. And you would not be robbing more park space from us, which is intended for fun and recreation, not war and death memorials. Memorial Park would provide a safe and secure location with 24-hour security, ample parking and event flexibility. Council, you must listen to the people you serve, the residents of this city. Three of you are running for mayor and one for state assembly. If you refuse to place voters' rights and the survival of this city above your own personal political careers, then we want you the hell out of Westminster. If you don't do the right thing and put this, about this monument location tonight, if you don't vote to put the tax major on the ballot in August, I promise you, we will make this campaign season a living hell for you. You can bank on that.
The next speaker is San Do. San Do.
Good evening, Mayor Tita, Vice Mayor Carlos Manzo, Councilmember Kimberly Ho, Councilmember Charlie Nguyen and Councilmember Tidol and all city officials and all present guests. My name is San Tidol, a Westminster resident and a member of the Quan Chi Monument Committee. You wonder why the old soldier put all their dedication into building a Quan Chi Monument? During the Vietnam War, the Southern Army has more than 1 million soldiers. Let's simplify the 1 million into three men. One was ultimately sacrificed. One was badly wounded. And one is lucky enough to be alive. When the alive soldier are doing for their wounded and sacrificed brothers, they raise fund to provide simple, basic food for their suffering wounded brothers in Vietnam. The next fundraising is on August 7, 2022 in Westminster. And the soldier are trying to build a memorial monument to honor and appreciate their fallen heroes. Those alive soldiers are sitting in front of you tonight to ask you for the monument decent location, not in a cemetery. You may ask why it must be in the public park. There were more than 350,000 South Vietnamese soldier and more than 68,000 US soldiers who lost their life to directly defend our freedom of 25 million South Vietnam. Your parents included, include the guy behind me. And indirectly defend the freedom of the free world. That includes the American people. Hence, the Quan Chi Monument is a typical one that deserves to be installed in a public park. There is a saying, alive is a soldier. Death is the Holy Spirit. The Quan Chi Monument will carry, will carry 8,000 angry South Vietnamese soldier spirits with their 20 US upsetting advisors. Hopefully, your caution decision tonight will give there a smile and gradually, gradually rest in peace. If you think the spirits will do us, does. If you think the spirit will do us, does not exist, look behind you to see what the sentence said. In God, we trust. Amen.
The next speaker is Roger Mindrum. Roger Mindrum.
Good evening, everyone. Roger Mindrum, resident of Westminster. Just want to say it's good to see a lot of people here speaking their minds, a lot of things on their minds. A lot of it probably has to do with their way of life, their home life, their safety and their health and around them, concerns of crime and homeless people around them. And I just have to bring up what happened two weeks ago at the meeting here that is just appalling that Mayor Ta instigated to put off real city business that should have been handled and spent four hours, again, hashing out little details about the Quan Tri monument. I think I've spoken enough on my own about how I feel about the monument, but I really think maybe in retrospect, looking back at what I've said here in the past year or more or on Zoom meetings when I was calling in, I've been pretty consistent. But looking back on it, maybe my message was wrong. Maybe you heard me attacking, putting down, insulting the monument that, of something that you hold so dear. In reality, in my heart and in my mind, it's been to protect our parks and our tax dollars, how they're spent. There has been, I mean, I don't even know if anybody's calculated the amount of money of our hard-earned tax dollars that are squandered on talking about this monument. And it's just appalling that you put off real city business when the city is in financial dire straits. It shows everyone, it's probably one of the reasons why there's more people here today. And hopefully there'll be more here that's not here, and hopefully these people will keep coming back to see what happens here because it is important. I tell people all the time that are enamored with national politics that it doesn't really mean much. This means more to people. This means more to you right here, what happens in this room. So more people need to be involved in your, your local governments. But getting back to the financial status of the city, does any of you disagree with the financial staff and the presentations that they've spelled out for you in black and white on paper, dollars and cents? That the status quo, you know what it is. You've, you've had so many presentations by our financial staff telling you. And again, the last meeting, you put off all of the city business. You didn't do anything until five minutes after midnight that you wanted to adjourn the meeting and the city manager said, "No, no, no, we have to do this." And you just rushed right through it. You blew right through it. No consideration of any details of it at all. So I sure hope tonight that you're going to do real city business because you have the real city business that should have handled, but handled two weeks ago that you have to do tonight. And I'm sure there's a whole bunch of more real city business that's on tonight's agenda that you need to handle. So please, don't again push forward talking about this Quan Tri monument. But if I can speak a little bit more about this, this monument, it's not really about the monument to me. It's about protecting the parks. I really wish you all could just take a step back out of, away from your personal, your personal view on this monument and look at the entire city as a whole. Take a step back, take an out-of-body experience and look at the whole city and realize there's 90,000-plus people here. There are going to be thousands of people in this city and visitors who are going to have to see that monument. And it's going to anger a lot of people and you're not, it's not going anywhere in our lifetime. If you put that thing in Tony Lam Park, right on McFadden, or Gillespie Park, right on McFadden, even Westminster Park on Magnolian Hazard, God, can you imagine? You're not, you can't take it back. Look at the magnitude of what you're about to do. Please protect our parks, what they're intended for, please.
The next speaker is Julie Don. Julie Don.
Kính chào Thị trưởng Tạ Đức chí. Phó thị trưởng Carlos Menzo, nghị viên Kimberly Hồ, nghị viên Cha Lây Nguyễn Mạnh Chí và nghị viên Tài Đỗ. Để xin tôi được đọc một cái bài rồi anh ấy dịch sau. Kính thưa quý vị, tôi tự giới thiệu tôi là một cựu quân nhân của sư đoàn thủ quân lục chiến và là cựu tổng hội trưởng nữ quân nhân hải ngoại từ năm 2014 đến 2022. Tôi nói về trận tái chiến cổ thành Quảng Trị từ tháng 6/72 cho đến 16 tháng 9/1972. Trong suốt 55 ngày đêm chiến đấu đã tổn thất hơn 7 ngàn quân nhân các cấp. Trong số đó có các chiến binh Hoa Kỳ, cố vấn Mỹ tham gia trận đánh đã tổn thất. Gồm có là 3,658 chiến sĩ thủ quân lục chiến đã hy sinh. Cả nước miền Nam Việt Nam hãnh diện nhìn lá quốc kỳ Việt Nam Cộng hòa. Cờ vàng ba sọc đỏ tung bay trên nền trời Quảng Trị chỉ ít lâu sau khi bàn tay kêu hùng của các anh em thủ quân lục chiến kéo cờ trên cổ thành Quảng Trị hôm 16 tháng 9/1972. Sư đoàn thủ quân lục chiến với sự hy sinh vô bờ bến của các anh em thủ quân lục chiến nói riêng và các đơn vị bản như hải quân, không quân, sư đoàn nhảy dù biệt động quân lực lượng đặc biệt thiết giáp địa phương quân nghĩa quân đồng bào Quảng Trị nói chung. Và cũng là để vinh danh quân đội đồng minh những chiến binh của quân đội Hoa Kỳ đã tham gia trận đánh tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị. Có hàng trăm phi vụ của quân đội đồng minh Hoa Kỳ đã thả bom và thả những quân nhân nhảy dù xuống yểm trợ cho trận đánh tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị. Và hải pháo của quân đội Hoa Kỳ đã giúp, đã trợ giúp cho nên đã tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị ngày 16 tháng 9/1972. Vì vậy, kính mong Thị trưởng Tạ Đức chí, quý vị nghị viên và các cư dân trong thành phố Westminster cho được đặt tượng đài tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị tại Freedom Park. Là nơi rất an toàn và sẽ không bị đánh phá bởi những kẻ xấu. Và cũng là nơi hầu hết các du khách đến Lítô Sài Gòn này đều muốn đi thăm viếng tượng đài chiến sĩ Việt Mỹ. Du khách từ ở xa các tiểu bang và các nước đến khu Lítô Sài Gòn của Westminster. Và cũng để tiện là nơi du khách thăm viếng một chỗ, du khách không có thì giờ để đi những nơi nhiều, chọn nhiều chỗ trong thành phố Westminster và để thành, thành phố Westminster cũng bảo trì dễ dàng hơn. Đồng bào quân dân cán chính và quân đội đồng minh Hoa Kỳ đã hy sinh trong trận tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị. Các cựu quân nhân, các cô chú bác còn hiện diện mỗi khi thấy tượng đài tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị sẽ an ủi với sự hy sinh xương máu của mình cùng đồng đội và cùng chiến đấu bên nhau năm nào để bảo vệ cho hai chữ tự do. Hiện tại, sức khỏe của tôi cũng không có được khỏe. Nhưng tôi cũng dám cố gắng đến đây hôm nay để dự buổi họp quan trọng này để nói lên nguyện vọng của mình trước khi nhắm mắt lìa khỏi thế gian này. Vì vậy, kính xin Thị trưởng Tạ Đức chí và các nghị viên trong thành phố Westminster và cư dân trong thành phố Westminster vui lòng chấp thuận cho được đặt tượng đài tái chiếm cổ thành Quảng Trị tại Freedom Park. Là một nơi thuận tiện cho các du khách và các cô chú bác lớn tuổi. Mỗi khi ra ngồi tại tượng đài chiến sĩ Việt Mỹ để nhớ lại cái trận đánh hào hùng năm nào và mà cả thế giới đều ngưỡng mộ về trận đánh này. Và có nhiều du khách đến City Westminster thì City có thêm được nhiều tiền thuế. Cảm ơn quý vị đã lắng nghe. Kính chào quý vị, tôi là cựu thiếu tá Trần Thị Huy Lễ, thủ quân lục chiến, trưởng phòng xã hội sư đoàn thủ quân lục chiến. Kính chào quý vị.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and the entire council, city council. My name is We Le Tietran. I am a former Marine of the South Vietnamese of the Republic of Vietnam. I'm also a former president of the female member of the military servicewoman of South Vietnam from 2014 to 2022. The battle to retake Quang Thuy lasts for 55 days and nine from June 1972 to September 16, 1972. More than 7,000 lives were lost among all military branches and ranks. Among those were American military advisor who had participate in the battle. More than 3,650,000 Marines lost their life. They made ultimate sacrifice. The entire country of South Vietnam were proud to see the flag of the Republic of Vietnam flying high on the sky of Quang Thuy as they were being raised by the Marines on September 16, 1972. The Marine Division made boundless sacrifice. But there were also sacrifice that were made by the Navy, the Air Force, the paratrooper, Special Force, Commando, Armor Division, local militia, as well as the people of Quang Thuy. But that's not the only thing that was sacrificed. It was made by our ally, the American advisor and the American servicemen and women who participated in the battle. There were hundreds of air mission by our American allies. They only, they not only dropped bombs, but also paratrooper so that the paratrooper could, could come and participate in the, in the battle. There were naval artillery support from the Americans or allies so that the city could be retaken. So because of all these sacrifice, I respectfully ask in that Mayor Ta as well as the entire city council and also the citizen of the city of Westminster to approve Freedom Park as the location for the monument. Freedom Park is a safe place so that the monument, the monument would not be vandalized. Most tourists who visit the city of Westminster or Little Saigon would want to visit the monument and it's convenient when they could visit, they can visit the monument as well as the war memorial. Tourists from, from near and far, when they, when they visit Little Saigon or Westminster, it's convenient for them to visit all these monuments and war memorial because they don't have time to go to different places during their visit. Also, it's convenient for the city to maintain the monument and the memorial. The servicemen and servicewomen as well as the people of Quang Thuy and their American ally may sacrifice, including ultimate sacrifice, to retake the, the city. Former military servicemen and women are here. They, that are still alive. They would be proud when they can see the monument at Freedom Park as well as to honor the sacrifice by their brother and sister-in-law. I am 85, I'm 84 years old. I'm, I'm not in the best of hell. I'm, I'm here today to ask you to approve the Freedom Park as the location for the monument and to express my wish before I leave this word. So again, thank you and I, and I ask that you approve Freedom Park as the location for the monument. Thank you.
Alright, so do we have any speaker on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We had a pre-advanced speaker and the first speaker will be Dan Corella. Sir, you may unmute yourself by pressing star six and you may begin speaking.
Good evening, Dan Corella here, 45-year homeowner, United States military veteran of the Korean War and an independent voter with no party preference. I've been analyzing and voting in elections for over half a century and it's my observation tonight that for four of you, your political party-
Yes, Mr. Corella will, will come back to you in a moment. The next speaker with their hand raised is Dal Tran.
Can you hear me?
Star? No.
I did hit star.
Star six.
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Hello?
Try it again.
What's me to do it again?
Hello?
Good evening. Try again.
Hello? Hello? Hello?
We're going to try one more speaker and see. We may be having an audio problem. The next speaker, Dal Tran will come back to you in just a moment. The next speaker, Amy Walsh. Amy Walsh, you may begin speaking.
Hi, sorry, I didn't, it didn't pop up that I could unmute, so. Oh God, where to start? I think the biggest thing that I want to start with tonight is I'd like to talk about the last meeting and then I came in a little late to tonight's meeting, you know, real-world stuff. Got to get in the way of this. Just the lack of the respect that I have seen our council members give to the residents. It's just, it makes me nauseous. It's so upsetting. And for the gentleman that was speaking earlier about his friends that were, that had passed in the war. And I, I'm obviously not there, so I don't know which one of you did it. But the fact that someone up there thought it was brilliant to go ahead and start checking their phones thought it was brilliant to go ahead and start checking their phones while someone is talking about, I just, it floors me. It floors me. You know, there's been so many meetings that you all have requested respect from us. Yet you never give us the respect at all, remotely whatsoever. There's a reason why residents come to the meetings and are very upset, are very angry. It's because they're treated with disrespect when they're at the meetings. They're treated with disrespect because the council members and mayor generally don't listen to public comments. They're too busy thinking about what they're going to say, what they're gonna re, you know, come back as a rebuttal. It's just, it blows my mind. I agree with Roger Mendrum when he was saying that it's about saving our parks or lack thereof. We have very little parkland. Come on. As far as the monument goes, again, I was there for the last meeting and the fact that it went on as long as it did. My God, I was able to get all of my college classwork done while listening. I mean, come on. This is, this is a city and we need to run it like a city. Not like a high school, you know, ASB club or something. I mean, my God. I literally have moved out of the city because of this council and the direction of the city. And I'm not the only one. At this point, the only reason I keep coming to the meetings is because I did so much while I lived in the city that I don't want to see that city fail. And sadly, that's what it looks like is gonna happen. Because people cannot get their heads out of their butts and away from the campaigns and the politics to actually do the things that are right. Step it up or you're not gonna get the votes at all remotely. And I agree with Terry that this election season is gonna be awful for you guys. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I tell people, don't vote for this person, definitely not this person. Fix it. Put SS on the ballot. Let us vote. Let us vote. Let us vote. Let us vote. I'm gonna keep saying it until I have no time. Let us vote. Let us vote. I hope Terry is chanting with me. Let us vote. Let us vote. Oh, by the way, let us vote. One more thing, let us vote. God, I do have a lot of time, don't I? Jeez. I guess let us vote again. Please, let us vote. Do the right thing. Let us vote. Don't, don't have voter suppression on your, you know, mailers that are gonna go out against you. Let us vote. Please, let us vote. It's very easy. Let us vote. Do I really still have time? Okay, let us vote. Oh, how much time do I have left? Because I don't have a timer up here.
The next speaker is Don Corella. I mean, excuse me, Dan Corella, if you can please unmute yourself, you may begin speaking.
Good evening.
Okay, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Dan Corella here. Forty-five-year homeowner, United States military veteran of the Korean War and an independent voter with no party preference. I've been analyzing and voting in elections for over half a century. And it's my observation tonight that for four of you, your political party and you have made the same serious error. And that is that the issues today are not all black and white. There are huge shades of gray as well in almost every issue. Now, let's focus on taxes. Taxes are a basic element in the financial aspect of every state, county, and every town in this country. Now, tax is not a feel-good word like happy birthday, but there are good taxes and there are bad taxes. And a responsible civic leader needs to make the distinction between the two. The payroll tax, taken out of a worker's paycheck to provide for that worker's social security retirement benefit, is a good tax. And I have yet to hear of anyone, Republican, Democrat, or Independent, who returns their social security check back to the federal government because it came from a collected tax. And there are bad taxes. One of the worst is the state gasoline tax. It was written for a good cause, repair and maintenance of streets and highways, but the authors failed to put inadequate spending controls. And right now, polls show that a huge majority of Californians, Republicans, Democrats, and Independents all want the gas tax temporarily suspended. Sadly, the Democratic governor does not. That fifty-four cent per gallon gas tax is what you should have been publicly opposing and not the tiny one penny city tax which has spending controls and a comprehensive written report given to all Westminster residents. Let's cut out the political baloney that the Westminster one-cent tax puts a financial burden on residents. These are tough financial times. The most families have to budget their finances. Generally, Westminster residents have to focus their budgets on three main categories: food, housing, and transportation. Transportation because in Westminster, there seems to be a two-three car average per household. Okay, if a housewife goes to the grocery store and buys ten dollars worth of food, milk, bread, eggs, and fruit, she pays zero, not one penny, in Westminster city tax. When that family pays their monthly rent or mortgage payment, there is zero, not one penny, in Westminster city tax attached. But if they buy ten dollars worth of gas, they pay over five dollars in taxes, half the cost of the gas. Now, that's a financial burden. Why don't you four people be honest and focus on what really hurts Westminster residents? The Westminster one-cent tax is a good tax. It doesn't hurt or financially overburden anyone, but it benefits an entire city. It's what has kept this city solvent for the last six years. What's really sad is that I keep listening, but I never hear what you fours' alternative is to the one-cent tax. I'm really concerned that your actions will result in the first city council financial failure in the long history of Westminster. But indeed, if that happens politically, you can be sure the media and the California Democratic Party will highlight your failure all the way south to Louisiana and north to San Jose. And politically, that failure label will stick to each one of you like glue. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dao Tran. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good evening. First, I want to raise my voice about the Quang Chi Victory Monument. For me, this is a wrong project for the city. The city supposed, not supposed to do a project just for the Vietnamese people. The city is for every community, not only Vietnamese. So, but because, just because Kimberly Ho's jealousy and hatred, so she and Tidal and Manzo put the first Quang Chi monument on post indefinitely. And then they already find another place to go. And then now, they want to build another monument with the same subject. And they use the city resources for this project. This is so ridiculous. They put on, they put on hold indefinitely the monument by a nonprofit organization, wishes everything on their own. They don't use anything from the city. But now Kimberly Ho, because she won, she wants her face. So she asked, with three votes, they use the city to make this project. And since then, they use a lot of city resources for numerous meetings. And about, let me tell you about the design. I know that everybody already said many times that this design is way too big for any city park. And I remember one time the park and recreation committee already said that they need to redesign smaller. And then they will suggest a park. But they keep that design. For me, this is, I agree with Mr. Roger Mendrum that this city has a lot, a lot of things to do. So this committee and about this monument already wasted a lot, a lot of time, almost a year, to talk about the monument. And they don't have a place there yet, but they already have design. And now, like a Mr. Vice Chairman, already, he said that September five, so the statue will be delivered. So he want to put the city council on pressure to have a place for them because of the statue already. It is so ridiculous. I'm saying one more time, this design is way too big for any city park, let alone Freedom Park. If, like I heard some of you want to put this design in Freedom Park, it will overpower the main monument of the American and Vietnamese soldiers side by side. So if they want this monument to be somewhere in the public park, they need to redesign. Otherwise, they cannot have it. Even that September fifth, you have a statue delivered, but if you don't have the place, so what would you do? And you need to put the benefit and you need to listen to Westminster residents first. They don't want to take a lot of place from the park for them to play sport or just to enjoy the open space. So please, listen to the benefit of the Westminster. Listen to them. And city has a lot of things to do, not just about this project, almost a year.
Time's up.
Thank you for listening.
The next speaker. Next speaker is Claudia. Please unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Buonas noches. I'd like to start off this meeting by saying that it brings me great joy to see residents standing up and speaking out about how our city is falling apart. It seems we spend so much time talking about the monument that it's now a distraction from what is happening under all our noses. Could this be intentional so that we aren't looking at the dumpster fire that is Westminster? Let's not forget the senseless murder of Bobby Easton, Westminster and Willow, just a few short blocks from schools, parks, and homes, all in broad daylight. I have lived in Westminster in the same residence for almost ten years. Just last week, on the night of the eighteenth, being thankful for my roots and key ear, because it's also no surprise how much illegal fireworks this exists in our city, I crawled through my home at eleven thirty PM as I rushed to my children's room while there was a shooting outside about thirty feet from us. Several bullets, one that destroyed two windshield and on my neighbor's car, missing mine by inches, flew in our city. My children are afraid to sleep in their room. How do I tell them that the city we live in is no longer safe? Then, not too long after, I hear about the meth lab and homeless on Benton Street near Hoover. Now, am I surprised? No, because we know our city homelessness issue continues to be passed over. So of course, escalation is expected. But what shocked me is the multiple "our hands are tied" approach the city continues to Band-Aid the situation with. What has to happen? Who exactly has to die? So what do all these have in common? It's district area two that is being affected. So what is the city doing to keep us safe? Are we being looked over because we aren't Little Saigon, though I hear that's not a bright area anymore? Is it because we aren't the nice or wealthy area of Westminster? What needs to happen? Again, who has to die? Whose blood needs to be on your hands so you can start doing right by your constituents? But of course, let us not continue, let us continue to talk about the monument. Let us continue to talk about this enormous statue that holds no value to the majority of our residents. This is a niche request, and it's starting to look like favoritism. But I know that's not a surprise to those of us who are being ignored. Do the sensible thing and put the monument at Westminster Memorial. If this monument has that much meaning, it won't matter where it is. If they truly cherish this monument, where it sits should not deter them from visiting this location. If you go to the WMP website, there are hours of operations as the location is open for visitors from five AM to seven PM. But they are available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I can bet they would be extremely flexible to work with the community and interest groups to come visit the monument. These tantrums about placing it at Freedom Park or any other publicly owned land is getting out of hand. Do the sensible thing and stop bleeding our city dry. And be honest, without Measure SS, you will not have the annual funds to maintain the monument anyway. Enjoy the movie nights, enjoy the tribute bands, because without Measure SS, these will be the last and this will end. The splash pad at Sigler Park, which we all enjoy over the summer, will shut down. We can start saying goodbye to police department, thanks to the mayor, to Charlie, and to Kimberly because all they care about right now is their campaign and the procession. I really hope those of you running a campaign don't have the audacity to ask our PD for an endorsement while you sit there and ignore Measure SS so they can keep their job. I look forward to having you prove me wrong, but I have a feeling you won't unless it benefits your campaign directly. I urge you, Mayor and council members, vote to put Measure SS on the ballot. Let us vote. Les exijo, miembros del consejo y el alcalde voten para poner la medida SS en la boleta electoral. Déjenos votar. Thanks. Gracias.
Mayor, that concludes the Zoom speakers as well and concludes our communications.
Thank you so much. With that, I close all communication. Next, we have a consent calendar or matters. This is another consent calendar I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item. Unless members of the council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion.
Motion to approve.
We have the motion and second to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. And that motion was made by Vice Mayor Manzo, seconded by Councilmember Doe. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, Mayor and council, if you can please press to vote on your screen.
Just for the purpose of the public, in the past, we've actually done voting on our screens. And this was pre-COVID. And for whatever reason, the technology just wasn't there and we weren't able to. But now we're reverting back to that. So just for ease of...
Alright. Vote, please.
Thank you. And the motion passes five zero.
Thank you so much. And now I open public hearings.
This is the time where any member of the... This is the time where any member of the audience wishing to speak on the public hearing item may step forward. Mayor, I did not receive any speaker cards and I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
All right, so item four point one, public hearing, introduce a first reading and ordinance of the mayor, City Council of the City of Westminster, California, adopting an amended military equipment use policy for Westminster Police Department. So may I have a staff report? So.
Actually, can can you read into the, just so people, especially on Zoom, we have a, in all caps, just that section for the public hearing, so people are aware to raise their hand on Zoom, et cetera. Just want to be sure everybody hears the rules for public hearings.
Sure. So this is a time for anyone in the audience wishing to speak on a public hearing item via Zoom or in person to come forward and address the city council. Um, they do have five minutes to speak on the item and the item currently is um, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of City of Westminster, adopting an amended military equipment use policy for the Westminster Police Department. This is currently placed on the agenda for first reading and introduction, led by title only and wait for the reading.
Good evening, Mayor Todd, Vice Mayor Monzo, council members, city staff and community members. So we're here tonight to speak about the A B four eighty-one. Uh, as as you know, last year in September, Governor Newsom approved many different legislations that affected law enforcement agencies across the state. A B forty-one was one of them. Uh, A B forty-one governs the use of military equipment, you know, what's deemed military equipment uh, within that policy is defined as well as uh, reporting requirements and uh, the need for an ordinance to pass a policy governing our use during our daily activities. So A B forty-one, as I said, was passed in January one, twenty twenty-two, and it gave us until May first of this year in order to start a process for a policy approval. Uh, we began that policy approval here on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two and as a receiving file to this council, and on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, uh, we had a first reading and on May eleventh, we had the second reading of that um, original ordinance and policy. At the direction of Vice Mayor Monzo and City Attorney Bentonhausen, we uh, and concerns voiced by the public, uh, we opted to revisit uh, the A B forty-one approval process, uh, partially because we needed to make some amendments to our policy that we discovered along the way, as well as wanting to honor the public hearing portion of the legislation. And so that process began again on June twenty-second of this year, where again, the it was brought forward to the this council as a receiving file. At that time, after that council meeting, it was posted to the uh, police department website as per the legislation's requirement for a minimum of thirty days review by the public so that they could prepare and um, read the policy as in its draft form as well as ordinance, so they could be present for the public hearing to speak on that matter. But today, July twenty-seventh, is marks the public hearing as well as the first reading of that ordinance. So one of the reasons why we brought it back uh, the second time is uh, again, it to recognize the public hearing portion of it, as well as make some amendments uh, from the police department standpoint. And I'll begin by saying uh, to define military equipment by A B forty-one, it contains a lot of different uh, equipment items, some of which that I believe the general public will associate with the military using. And some of them, I believe, uh, is somewhat of a misnomer because they're not necessarily equipment procured from the military. It's equipment that we use on a daily basis uh, as law enforcement officers to provide safety for our public and community. Uh, such items are um, you know, forty millimeter uh, kinetic weapons. Basically, they launch a a small projectile that's like a rubber ball, um, similar to a Nerf ball, uh, as well as various other types of munitions that we would use on a daily basis. So in preparation for the public hearing, um, we also, per the legislation, were required to make the posting for so uh, the hearing. And it was posted in the Westminster Herald on Thursday, July fourteenth. Um, it has been up uh, published in that uh, periodical. So revisiting it, there were some items also that A B forty-one requires us, in order to purchase, it has to be approved. So some of the items that were contained uh, within the policy and the quantities listed are those quantities that we may wish to fulfill at a later date but don't currently possess. Um, and so one of the public comments received previously was there was a concern over um, the forty millimeter launchers, the actual uh, device that launches the rubber balls. And so we had increased that from fifteen to twenty-five. Uh, and there was concern voiced by the public over that number. Um, I wanted to clarify, as I did the last time, the police department only possesses twelve. We have not purchased any additional launchers since twenty twenty-one. And the reason why it was increased to twenty twenty-five was to provide us an opportunity to be able to outfit each of our patrol units with that weapon to uh, as a tool to our officers uh, in the performance of their duties. Uh, the other thing was we increased the number of rounds that we use, the lower ball projectiles. And in in an effort to be transparent, um, I during that process, I approved the purchase of additional munitions of those rounds. And in conversations with legal counsel, it was discovered that I had misinterpreted um, that language and had inadvertently purchased them when I should not have. And so ultimately, upon that discovery, uh, we affected a return of those items. They are no longer in our possession. They have been returned to the vendor. And no payment has been made to that vendor as a result of that return. And so with that, I ask if the council or community members have any questions regarding our policy or.
And if I could just, on that one item, once this policy is approved and in place, then those those could be purchased. It was just a matter of making sure the policy was in place before it was actually purchased.
Yes, one other thanks Commander Iwashi for your orientation. We appreciate that. So now is it a time for question or concern from any member of the city council?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, Commander. Have you have you received any any uh, calls from residents, presidents with any concerns since our last meeting on this?
I have not.
Um, I think you might have spoken about this before, but can you speak on the lifespan of those of those launchers? Since you said the last time we purchased them were in twenty-one?
So the the launchers themselves are, um, I believe I have it in here. I don't believe we have a expiration date for the launcher specifically. Let me do. Lifespan for the launcher is approximately twenty-five years.
And then can you, just for the purpose of just information, why is some of these um, items considered or or classified as military equipment? Like um, like tasers, for instance, or noise flash um, devices?
So I I believe uh, the legislation was passed, I believe, at community concern over transparency and accountability for the use of these items, particularly in the use in uh, for lack of public demonstration purposes, First Amendment right protected events. Um, as we saw, you know, just approximately a year, year and a half ago. And so the public, I believe, demanded more accountability for it, and that legislation has been passed, as well as several others that govern our use and ability to use some of these devices in uh, in those types of situations.
Thank you. Um, I'm good. Thank you for that.
Thank you. So is there any other question or concerns before as for public comments? So now is it a time for a member from the public who would like to say? Thank you, Commander. We appreciate it.
Mayor, I have not received any speaker cards and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, so with that, I uh, close our public uh, comment. Oh.
Mayor, someone just raised their hand.
Please, please.
Amy Walsh, you may you may begin.
Sorry, I thought I had pushed the hands up button. Um, I just wanted to take a minute um, to thank uh, W P D for uh, what was just said about uh, going back and making sure that things were done correctly. Um, I know I'm speaking on behalf of another resident uh, that unfortunately can't be here. Um, uh, but I'm glad that this uh, has been, you know, brought to light. I'm glad that it was discussed. Carlos Manzo, thank you for um, asking those questions. And uh, on behalf of said resident, which I'm sure the W P D knows who I'm talking about, um, I would like to say thank you for going back and um, re uh, reworking what needed to be fixed and uh, moving forward in the correct way and the public way and everything is kosher in that part, that little part right there, W P D, good job. Everything else, sorry. Okay, that's all. Thanks. Bye.
Mayor, there are no other hands raised at this time.
All right, so uh, thank you so much. So now is the time for a council member action? I uh, the mayor and City Council member, I uh, move as staff recommended, introduce an ordinance for the first reading entitled of uh, an ordinance of the mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, adopting an amended uh, military equipment uh, use policy for Westminster Police Department. Second. All right, we have the motion and the second as recommended, that to approve this item.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. And if you can please enter your vote on the screen.
Vote, please.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Mayor, can I say something real quick? Um, I just want to say thank you to our police chief and Commander Washington, going through all the trouble to making sure, and also City Attorney Benhausen for uh, going through the extra, that extra mile to make sure that we, in the spirit of transparency, that we uh, bring this back and look at it further and allow the public to comment on any concerns that they may have. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, so next item. Uh, five point one, reserve of reserves related to short-term rental regulation in Orange County City. So I'd like to uh, uh, invite Mr. Rocky, our planning manager, to provide us a staff report.
So actually, um, so I I have to give credit to Ryan Sales, our management analyst, who did he uh, he did this report and the like work on this research. Unfortunately, um, he could not be here tonight to present the report, so.
I read from my script.
Yeah, so did a wonderful job reading the script. Unfortunately, uh, we missed the memo there. So um, so yeah, so unfortunately, Ryan is not here to present the report, but we do have, you know, a report that we can provide you. Um, so basically, this is a self I'm sorry. So back in April, back in April, um, staff presented an item uh, to the council regarding uh, the current ban on short-term rentals and the possibility of allowing those short-term rentals in residential areas. A lot of the discussion had to do with the prevalence of um, Airbnbs and, you know, those types of um, establishments that are operating illegally around town. Um, we do have a current ban. I apologize if I'm echoing. I sound like I'm echoing right now. The sounds a little better. Okay. Um, so we do have a current ban in the city um, in which we do not allow short-term rentals. Uh, and that's defined as a rental or lease um, of a single-family dwelling unit or multi-family dwelling unit for a period of thirty days or less. Um, and so during that discussion in April, a council requested additional information um, on the short-term rental regulations that are in other cities. And so staff are primarily Ryan compiled a report that includes uh, results from the other thirty-three cities in Orange County. Uh, so each city was contacted and um, so we were able to obtain the most updated and accurate information as to what is allowed. So in the staff report, there's actually a table that provides a very detailed um, outline of what is allowed and what's not allowed. Now, I mean, it also shows the uh, tax rate uh, or the tax revenues that are generated from each of those cities. Um, those that are essentially transient occupancy tax or T O T and the business license tax. Uh, so in the Orange County cities that were surveyed, nineteen cities prohibit short-term rentals and fourteen allow them. Um, Westminster's neighboring cities, which are of course ones that this council is very interested in, um, they are a bit more restrictive uh, than what's seen in in overall Orange County. Um, but uh, the the ten closest cities to Westminster, um, Huntington Beach and Orange allow short-term rentals. Anaheim and Seal Beach also allow short-term rental rentals, excuse me. Um, but they only allow those uh, that were permitted before the current restrictive ordinance that they have um, in each city. Um, and those were established in twenty sixteen and twenty twelve, respectively. Uh, Cypress, Fountain Valley, Garden Grove, Los Al, Santana and Stanton, all prohibit short-term rentals. Um, in the cities that allow and regulate short-term rentals, operators are required to pay um, at minimum the T O T and the business license tax. Uh, Westminster's T O T rate is eight percent. Other Orange County cities range anywhere from nine percent to fifteen percent. The T O T would be the main source of revenue for the city, um, if the ban on short-term rentals in residential areas um, is eliminated. And so among the cities that currently allow short-term rentals, uh, the regulations have, again, varying terms and structures. And so of course, the uh, the table is a little bit more specific on one of that, on what that is. Um, but just to share some of the examples, some of the cities uh, allow short-term rentals, um, or rental permits to be issued. Uh, but they also, but they prohibit any new short-term rental uh, permits to be issued. So like Anaheim and Seal Beach are examples of that. Uh, some have a, uh, they have a cap on the number of permits allowed uh, to be active at one time. And then other cities have no specific regulation um, in the municipal code, um, but they're still considered permitted by the city. Uh, some of the differences that are also in the description column of the table provided, and this is for anyone else there, it's it is available online. The municipal code, the municipal code sections and uh, webpages are referenced, um, you know, for each of those cities um, are on the those tables. Um, and then, of course, uh, links to these resources are available and can be provided to council, you know, if if you wish. Um, but that generally gives an overview of what um, the other cities are doing. Um, of course, any, because the regulations range in the cities, um, you know, staff is looking for additional direction on what you would like to do in terms of you know, in in terms of what regulations you would consider or like to see in this city if you were to allow it. Um, and that is if uh, the city council is even interested in moving forward.
All right, I want to thanks uh, City Manager for her uh, detailed reports. And it is now time for all members of the council to discuss and have a direction for staff.
You know, it would be interesting to know why these cities started with uh, short-term rentals and um, then put a cap on. Uh, I know what the current uh, situation in their cities are like uh, from this table, but I'd like to know. It would be interesting to know um, why some of them are prohibited and um, why are they like such as Anaheim? Uh, is there something that we could learn from them? I I mean, that'd be very interesting to know because we don't want to uh, you know, whatever it is we can learn from from them.
We can certainly look into, um, you know, Anaheim. I know a few years back, there was uh, obviously discussion because Anaheim is a very uh, it is a heavy tourist area uh, with a very prominent hotel industry. Um, and that's always part of, uh, that's always part of a larger discussion is that um, these types of Airbnbs take away from the uh, the Um, and that's always part of uh, that's always part of a larger discussion is that um these types of Airbnbs take away from the uh the hotel industry to some extent. And I know that was part of their discussion, but we can certainly, um if there are certain cities that you're interested in, you know, certain questions or certain cities and their regulations, we can certainly move forward with a much more extensive research into very um focused areas.
All right, any other concerns from uh other council member, please?
Um, yes, I have a question as far as I've heard, I way back when, I think I saw a report um of of how many, I think somebody was doing some research and I got an email about how many uh we have currently operating in the city illegally. Do do we have any information on that?
I, so I do remember that email. There was a number, and I think we talked about it back in April, and there was a number thrown out of about, I want to say four hundred or so. Um, I don't.
Um. Sixty to seven.
Oh, okay, yeah, so.
Okay, um, and what concerns me is the the resources. I mean, if we know they're out there, what resources do we have to enforce our current ordinance? And and also, if this were to be amended to allow, what resources would we need to can to monitor them? Um, what does that look like?
So ultimately, this is a, this is a code issue, so it would be code enforcement that would have to go out and enforce.
Thank you for that one. Um.
Okay.
Um, so we don't, we're struggling.
So we have code enforcement officers that are assigned to particular areas, and they are focused on code. Would be something that they would be enforcing and would continue to enforce.
I know that some, back when we were getting some reports and complaints of from neighbors, from residents, as far as some operating um and the complaints were because they were operating at the time and it was a noise, the noise issue, that we just um kind of whack a mole type of enforcement when we get a call.
Well, so, so the idea is that we're not doing whack a mole. Um, we are trying to respond as much as we possibly can, but we go back to, you know, um, the the expectation of what code enforcement used to be when we used to have part-time code enforcement officers that worked weekends and evenings and could handle some of these complaints that were after hours. And so now, um, you know, we're restructuring our code enforcement team a little bit to be able to cover more days and hours. Um, you know, with the small team that we have for a city that's this size. Um, and so essentially, we're not trying to not respond, but things that have not been responded to, it's because of the lack of staffing for those particular days and times.
So, um, again, so if if this were to be amended, what would it look like as far as how would we monitor and collect the TOT?
Well, so that would, so that would, so the big problem, that's why I know, like, at some point, I thought somebody threw out a four hundred number. There's sixty on, there's sixty on a website. There are Airbnbs that are being rented, not officially as an Airbnb, you know, put it in the newspaper somewhere or word of mouth or just a random rental. So properties that are not accounted for. Um, so in order to, in order for us to know and I guess for an Airbnb or, you know, for a property to be legitimized, we would have to come up with some kind of permitting process or some ki- you know, some kind of form of accountability for them. Um, and so that's pretty much where you would start. Obviously, anything that's operating without a permit would just be perceived, it would just be considered an illegal operation, just as we have legal businesses that operate, right? Um, but it would, it would really start with the um, the permitting process. Um, holding that, you know, having that accountability, looking at the numbers and seeing how many that we have. And then, you know, if uh with, you know, with funding available, we would adjust our staff and our hours and things as necessary to address issues that would come up with these types of short term rentals, you know, again, in those evening hours or those weekend hours and.
Is there any, um, I mean, how, I mean, this is for us to look further into this, what it, what would it look like as far as it's cost for us to try to get a um some research as far as the potential, potential revenue? Um, what do you think that would cost us to look further into that?
So, so we would be looking at like, like a company like HGL to do an analyses for us and, or analysis, rather. Um, and so I think Erin's trying to figure out what that cost could potentially be. She works with them more, but um, but we we would have to have them come in and and do that, uh do that study for us. I just don't know what that cost is at the moment.
Do we have any idea what these other, another city similar to the size of Westminster, what their um revenue is, or do we know?
Um, so we we would have to, so we've only gone as far as looking at their, um, you know, like their percentages of what they're getting, but if we wanted to get actual numbers, we could, you know, contact their finance departments and get that that data. Um, but without knowing what their budget looks like or how many they have, it's, you know, it it's a ratio that might not mean anything to us. Um, but we can, you know, we can certainly find out with cities that are comparable in our size.
Thank you.
Let me see some, yeah, okay. So, um. Regarding to Airbnb, um, I know the subject matter came up a couple of years ago and now it's coming back. Um, so I just want us to keep in mind that um we have heard forever, since I've been on the council, constant complaint about uh collection of sales taxes. Um, our um complaints, I'm just gonna leave it at that. Um, I'm not gonna target any particular community, but Airbnb is not gonna be limited to a particular community. It will be pretty much um the entire Westminster uh from east to west. So, um. So the largest and 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 best documented potential benefit of of Airbnb is uh increase in supply of travel accommodations. Um. We as policy policymakers have a lot of factors to consider when we are making this decision. When we make policy regarding short term rentals, um my research indicates that um among them, one of the things that we need to consider are the long-term effects of our actions, of our policy, if we're gonna have any policy regarding Airbnb. And how that is going to affect us in the long term, you know, I, um. And uh are there going to be any unintended consequences, of course, you know, if they're already unintended? How are we going to, we don't intend, we don't intend, that's why the word unintended. But that's why I I kind of want to learn from from other cities, what they've done and why they started and stopped and why they capped. And I know even cities like um Big Bear have, you know, um capped their uh Airbnb permits and why, why is that? So I mean, we do need to, if this is gonna be a a ci- a serious consideration, I think that we need to uh look more into it. Um, and so it it's very, very obvious and evident that we need more manpower, as you mentioned, code enforcement. Um, and at least to monitor compliance, compliance when it comes to, I'm sure we're gonna have rules, music, partying, what kind of parties and what kind of music, or not maybe not what kind of music, but you know, hours of day, of the day and and um and the loudness and et cetera. And so, so that alone, uh we need to monitor. Uh, we'll get a lot of calls. And of course, um compliance in terms of permits, I'm sure you you all agree that we're gonna have to monitor permits and right now. You know, I mean, not, don't just look at the Airbnb website. I think earlier when somebody mentioned sixty something um on Airbnb, and I'm sure maybe that's on Airbnb. But if you look at VRBO, that's Farbo, or or even just regular, you know, just like those wanted ads, newspapers, local newspapers, et cetera. So so one of the biggest concerns is safety for our citizens. As it is right now, we're not even sure we're gonna have our police department with a one cent tax renewal up for discussion next month and the looming bankruptcy. We can't begin, we cannot begin to move forward with STR, even if we found that STR is a benefit to our city. I I can go into one benefit that really intrigues me, but I want to first say that the one cent tax, and as someone earlier mentioned, that our financial future should be our priority, and I totally agree with that. If, and the this, these are serious considerations. So if we're talking about Airbnb, I'm not, I'm not, this is not a one cent tax agenda. So we're talking about the one cent tax and 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 whether or not we're gonna have uh our police force. If we, if in August, um, the council vote not to extend that tax, we will have to cut our police force. So how can we even, how can we even talk about burning our police um department with more, more calls or more um more things to do um in terms of monitoring for compliance? Um, even if we do extend, we would at least lose one quarter. That's like if we were to extend in August and put it on the ballot, we are gonna lose approximately one quarter. That's four million dollars. And if we don't um pass it all together and discuss it next year, and so the earliest we could put on the ballot would be, you know, pass it would be March, and then it'll be, the earliest we'll have that money would be in October. I checked on it today, and so we'll lose three quarters, and that's about we annually, we receive seventeen million, so we'll receive only, we will lose twelve million. So I just want to say for this reason and many other reasons, I really want to vote for it, but I want to vote, I want to do the right thing. We 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 need to just focus on on our finances, our finan- financial and looming bankruptcy.
Um, but uh, I'm sorry for, you know, uh to you coming in and uh interrupt here, but I think that the S measure is not under agenda for.
I'm talking about a reason for Airbnb or not Airbnb.
But then you don't talk about.
I don't know, what do you? Um, so I am talking about the finances, our finances, so. So for this reason and many other reasons, I vote to table it. And um so some of the other things, so that's like the first, that's my first and foremost and most important reason for for tabling it. But there are other things that that um, like you can tell that I'm, you know, I do research my, before I speak. And I I do have information, and that's why, that's why I prefer sometimes to give you guys the ability to speak first, and I I could be last. But since nobody was speaking after um Vice Mayor, um so I decided I'm gonna go forward and 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 speak. So uh please give me my time. So, um. So then, you know, we're talking about our hotels, our motels, and I think the unfair advantage uh that we want to look into. It it does take away the revenue, uh our TOT revenue currently is, I think I have it somewhere, and that is on the av- on the average, I remember eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Except for the year, I believe that was twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, that we 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 took a hit, as you know, because of COVID, that we lost two hundred thousand dollars in TOT revenue, and so that brought us to to six hundred thousand. So if you think about if, are we going to lose revenue or gain revenue by doing Airbnb? So right now, if we don't have the infrastructure in place, we don't have our police force, we don't have any uh way to, uh, we don't have any, that's why I brought up the looming bankruptcy and all that. Uh, we, and we don't have a way to um monitor for compliance in many different aspects of compliance. Um, then we are not going to realize that that money that we're banking on gaining from Airbnb. So, um. So, um. I I understand that, you know, what if I, if I were to go for Airbnb, uh or if I vote for this, I can tell you, I I I think I will benefit the most out of everybody here. And I'm sure you all would agree, you know. So when it comes to rentals, we all know that we, when we do Airbnb or short term rentals, we make more money. Um, and and so, you know, we've, we've worked so hard to to combat this um housing shortage over, gosh, five, six years that I've been on on the council, that we talk about the RENA numbers, you know, state laws, to a point where we lost our local control because they're trying to come in and tell us to build more and to help with um affordable housing and increasing more supply and because there's less, less supply and and higher demand. And that's why the housing market is just, you know, the prices are getting out of hand. So, you know, even the Airbnb, uh when I, when I research in short term rentals, you know, it is clear that it will displace our lo- our local tenants. Okay, and put pressure on tight, the tight housing markets. And and so that is only gonna exacerbate um our affordable housing crisis. Okay, so right now, the the, we, we know that our rental market is skyrocketing in price. And uh so when we're talking, when we talk about Airbnb, we, it might satisfy our needs, like I said, it'll make me rich. I I, you know, uh because I, if I choose to go that route, I'll make more money in rental income. And so therefore, the, so a lot of landlords, not just myself, I mean, they can do the math, um, would switch from long, long term to short term market. Um, and that is not by me, that this is not by all my own research, according to the professor of marketing at USC who co-authored a broad study on this issue. So if you want to look at that study, I would be happy to, you know, forward it to you. Um. So, um, you know, I I try to do really a thorough research on this, on this matter, and I just hope that we, we do the same, we 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 owe it to ourselves to make sure that we don't burden ourselves with with more problems than we can handle at this time. I'm not saying no to it altogether, but I think we should table it to research it. Um, then there's another professor of um in economics at Cal State University, Northridge, um that talks about short term rental that led to higher pri- uh rent prices and adversely impact the housing supply, particularly the long term renters. And he's done the research to prove it. Um, and and his name is um Professor Edward Kung, and so I can forward you the study. Um, so that is really, really clear. Now, here's one thing, and to be really fair, I want to point out the good thing about short term rental. So I'm sure everybody who loves short term rental will want to hear that. And this is something that I'm saying that while we're talking about the subject, I I want to bring it up. Um. So basically, the one good thing that, and I really like this and that, and this is something we could look into. Um, you know, during, in this study, they could measure the amount of investment going into residential properties. So they look at the impact of local regulations that restricted short term rentals. And so their findings is that cities that allow short term rentals find that um there's, there are more short term rental. there's, there are more short term rental, more, more housing built for short term rentals that would eventually could be converted to long term rentals. That makes sense? I mean, that's, that's, that's actually, you know, a big plus for short term rental. And the research shows that property values grew at a faster pace in communities that actually have short term rentals. And so again, so basically, you know, short term rental can play a significant role in supporting local real estate markets. And which, which, and, and while it can boost the local tax base at the same time. So I mean, those are some pluses that I think worth looking into. So again, I'm not saying no to Airbnb, but I'm thinking that what are we going to have on our hands? So it's going to be more staff. And we're looking, we're looking at a problem right now, our financial situation right now. And that's going to possibly, if we don't get this one cent tax, again, it, it all ties in with our decision and we cannot look, we cannot not look at our finances. So if you're not looking at our finances, then you're not making the right decision. You know, because it's going to need manpower to monitor. Our code enforcement department is, gosh, as you could see, they're not, they're not even looking at short term rentals. And so that's why you're seeing possibly four hundred, I believe it's about that, that many non-compliant or illegal STR activities. So if that is our plan, then we should be looking more into it. If you, if we could like have our staff table this, have our staff look more into these issues. And look at some cities that, just like Vice Mayor mentioned, that are similar to our size, our city. We're, we're not a touristy city. We're trying, we're trying, that's our, really, our long term endeavor is to, to, you know? But we're not really labeled as a tourist city. We're more like a bedroom community with, you know, the west side. And as you know, what kind of city we have, I don't need to tell you, but we're, we're not on par with Anaheim, we're not on, we're really not on par with Huntington Beach. So if you can compare, try to compare apple with apple and see why did these cities start and stop short term rental? And let's learn from that. And then let's prevent unintended consequences, consequences that could be very, very costly. So as I mentioned, right now, we've got in our hand an average of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in TOT tax. Our, our TOT tax rate is very low, eight percent. But it does add up to eight hundred and fifty thousand. And so I understand on paper, and it sounds good, that yeah, we're going to have more taxes, we're going to be able to rake in and bring in more revenue. But, but we are not going to see that if we don't plan and we don't have the infrastructure, if we don't have the manpower, and if we don't have our finances together. That's not something that should be on the table right now to talk about. So that, that would be my stand on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Councilmember Nguyen? Yes, I know that as a city, we are trying to do different ways to bring in revenues at this point. But whatever the decision that we are making tonight is going to, you know, affect for long term. So, you know, there's no doubt that, you know, elimination of, of banning of the short term rental will, you know, will bring in some revenues for the city. But beside the negative sentiments from the residents that, you know, create more problem with block bookings and because of the security and things like that. I read the staff report and I'm more, I'm, I'm more concerned about this, the paragraph that you guys have here, which is, can I have that yours? I'm trying to read it from here. My apology for that, because when I review and then somehow I forgot it at home. I'm trying to read from my phone and it's not coming up right now. But here is the problem. The problem that I see is that, it's saying fourteen. Sorry about that, but you know, there are, there are problems with those cities that already allow, with the fourteen city that allow to have their, have their short term rental. We see number of issues that they still have. Some of the cities already granted, but then they only continue with those who already apply for it and prevent from new applicant to apply for it. And some of the other cities, you know, trying to monitor, you know, to give out the permits and, and, you know, and numbers going on. I don't have the staff report here to read for, for you. But that's concerned me that, you know, at this point here, for those city already allow short term rental and they are facing problem themselves. And here we are trying to, you know, trying to approve, you know, banning or elimination of the short term rental. So I, you know, I think that we should have considered this very carefully before we decide to move on or change the decision and eliminate the short term ban of the short term rental. Is there any other concerns from other council member before council have an action on this item?
Yeah, if I may, thank you. Because when I introduced this, put this as an item on the agenda several months ago, I just share my personal experience when I travel. I had to bury my knees in Michigan. And our family had to rent an Airbnb. And I think that within that, the proximity of that funeral, particular funeral home, there's no Airbnb and we have to rent one that's several miles away. But we want to stay together as a family. It's a family reunion on such a sad occasion and we have to stay in one place. I don't care where we have to go. And the same thing when my, when my son got married last year, my family from our town traveled to, to attend the wedding. And they have to find a place to stay together because it's my, my brother's families and it's a standard family of daughters and son-in-law and grandkids and ex-wife and all that stuffs. So they have to find a Airbnb, not in our city. Because we, we, we don't have one, but they determined to stay together. And, and that's why they have to go to different city, city to hire, to rent a, and Airbnb unit. So I, I argue my point at last council meeting and many, a couple of the hotel representative in, you know, in this town agree. Airbnb is not, I mean, a short term rental is not a combination to a single room hotel. We make it very clear, this is a single room hotel, a single room hotel. You cannot house a large family and, and with equipped kitchen as well. That's other amenity like a single family home. And you, right now, approximately seventy, eighty illegally operating short term rental going on in our city. You know what, what, what it tell me is basically we're punishing law abiding citizen, the people who obey the law. Who basically, okay, the law in the city forbid short term rental. Well, guess what? I'm not going to do it. But who benefit from that? You know, those people who illegally operate short term rental. And, and are we going out there enforced to enforce that? No, we're not. And it doesn't do anything for our city. For years, we, this council are not trying to come up with a creative idea to bring in revenue. And we just ban everything, we depend everything, all of expenses are based on tax, sales tax. I don't think it's right. I think that I, I'm looking at the Huntington Beach model. They charge six hundred and twenty-four dollars for the application fee for the first two years. And then three hundred and twenty-four dollars annually, ten percent TOT. I, I think on top of the hotel TOT that we collect the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if that figure is correct, we're going to generate some money for our city. Airbnb recently had announced that they are basically forbid the parties. No parties at their rental properties. And Huntington Beach, it's, it's also listed that no events, no commercial parties, wedding fundraiser or conferences allowed. You know, when we regulate this, we can license, we can inspect, we can collect tax and application fees. They're going to generate a significant amount of money to our city on, and it's better than doing nothing, ban everything. And then depends on the sales tax. We're not sure if this council is going to support the sales tax in a couple of weeks or not. And beside that, we're not doing anything else to, except banning the short term rental based upon the pressure of a special interest group. So I would urge this council to look into this and, and approve this with the condition that the city staff will look more into. I like the Huntington Beach models with the application fees and the ten percent tax. We can regulate and fine if, if the owner violating the city ordinance, which regulate a short term rental. We're talking, we're talking about short term rentals, it's not, not including Airbnb. But we, we need to have regulation that ban parties and large scale. Thank you.
Let me just mention something really quick. You mentioned you want ten percent, but TOT is TOT, our TOT is eight percent. So you can't really say you want some random ten percent or twelve percent. It is eight percent. You can.
Isn't that what the council is all about?
I just want to ask our attorney.
Isn't that what the council is all about? We can make the pause, right?
Yeah, that would have to go to the, as a ballot measure.
Four out of ten, four out of five, super majority, just like any tax.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. First, I want to say something to the council real quick to correct you. This is, this has been, this term has been used and it's incorrect. The council does not have the ability or the authority to, to approve the, the tax measure. We're going to increase it, we're going to, we, we only allow the residents to vote on it. It's not, council doesn't have the authority to extend the once in sales tax. That's the voter's right to do that. Ours, our responsibility is to, to hold, uphold democracy and allow the residents to, to voice their, their opinion on that issue. So we need to start, if we're going to talk about it, let's say the correct thing. I agree with Councilmember Do, I mean, the way I see this, I don't think we have enough information present and before us to, to make a decision on this. I think we need to, like I've said before, we can't thumb our nose at, at, at possible potential revenue because we can't afford it. I think we need to have our staff, you know, look further into it and, and the reason of what it would take, what resources it would take, what it would cost. And there is impact, there is definitely some negative impact to the residents if you live next to one. But there's also, there is also a local business possible revenue. But there's, I think that one is hard to really predict what possible revenue would bring to local businesses like restaurants with that. But I think we'd need to gather some more information and really bring back to the council at a later time. Just some general information as far as without, I mean, right now, we don't have the, the resources to spend a, you know, bunch of money to hire a company to do a really, really in-depth analysis of this. But if we can just give us some general information at a later time and then if we're in a, hopefully we're in a better position to really, you know, really dive into this further and get some real strong numbers on this. But yes, I agree with Councilmember Do, we can't just keep saying no to everything. So, but I think we should look further into it and get some more information on this. So I would motion to have staff just look further into this and bring us some, some general information at a later time.
Yes, I believe I said that too. What, what I, I think would be the most productive, most efficient way to look more into this without costing us another, another cost of a consultant. A private consultant can cost a lot of money and, which we don't have, is if we can look into, if we have the same Mr. Zet Saltz who did the research and he called, or however he got the data. But I think we need to look deeper into a city that we choose. Like if we choose, like I said, some, a city that's close to our, not necessarily our size, but our type of city, bedroom type of community with, you know, some business community mix. And also do like some case studies. So take, let's say, whatever that city is, just do a case study of that city. Study that city and then dig deeper. I want to know like what exactly happened and what revenue and whatever it is that they can volunteer. I'm sure they would not hesitate to volunteer some of that information. And they'd probably be very happy to share information with us. And they know we're looking to do the same, but we just don't want to. We want to see if we can avoid some of the problems that they, that occurred with them with, when, when they did it. So I think no one would deny of us that, of that. And I, as a matter of fact, I think they'd be honored. So I'm, I'm on for that.
Yes, I want to thanks all the members of City Council that already share your comment. I believe that in the past of City Council, we had a reason, we had a reason to ban short term rental because of the, because of the issue of the traffic and the noise happening in neighborhood. So I don't see the reason why we have to have the short term rental in our city. I understand that we need more, our city, we need more revenue. But at the same time, that if we have, that we have this in our city, we have to build infrastructure or we, or we need to hire staff for the enforcement and we don't have that luxury. So I'm not really sure about the motion. So what, what was the motion?
I think we spoke about it, just gather, have staff bring us back more information as far as resources needed, possible, some sort of estimate of possible revenue. And look at other, like Councilmember Hoj was mentioning earlier, case studies. Just bring us at a later time and hopefully, hopefully down the road, we're in a better situation to, to do something if, if council chooses to move forward with it. Currently, right now, we're not in a.
So with that, I, I would like to ask City Council that we take no action on this item. And in the future, anytime if any council member feel that is a. And in the future, anytime if any council member feel that it's a right time for us to bring it up. I think that our rule that we allow all council member or even staff to bring it up. So why do we need to take any action on this item?
So we do have a motion on the floor, so it either needs to have a second or die. But, but as far as the direction that, you know, you could take action for staff to come back. Like you did, like you did last time. Yeah, the motion, the motion made by Vice Mayor Monzo was to come back with more information. So I've taken notes on what that information could look like. Staff will bring it back when, you know, this one, it took three months to come back with information because the research does get extensive and there's only one Ryan and we need like ten of him to finish this, but.
And I would say too, that if you're asking staff to spend time on something like this, it's a good idea to make a motion. Give them direction.
You're going to make a substitute motion for that?
Is there a second? If there's not a second, then the motion dies and then you can make an.
Yes. I thought there was, there was a second, Councilmember.
I withdrew that motion before and.
Is there a second?
Could you, maybe you repeat your motion one more time? And be more specific?
The motion was to have staff bring us back at a later time, not next week or two weeks from now.
To, to do what?
In the future, when, when they had time allows to bring us back, general information as far as what resources needed to enforce, collect possible revenue. Look at other cities that are similar to us and what their cases are, case study. And then maybe a possible revenue as well.
Been like logistic.
Pros and cons, pros and cons.
Why does cities prohibit it? Why capped? Why they started and stopped? Look at other cities, comparable cities, amounts.
Also issues that other cities may have, the, you know, enforcement issues, noise issues, police, police issues.
I think once you do a case study, all that will come out, like with a case of that city. Or if you take a few cities, study those cities and their problems and their, so that benefits and their costs and just even financial benefits and burdens. Like staff burden, things like that. And I think you could take your time because, well, what I wanna say is that I'm all for bringing revenue into the city, you know? But I'm also for making sure we go thorough, we have, we do thorough vetting. Because, you know, these are issues that are not simple. We don't, I mean, I don't wanna just, I don't wanna knock anybody, but I'm just, I wanna say that we don't wanna just scratch the surface when we say, yeah, this is what we want, you know? And so we're gonna, just with three votes, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. I think this is an issue that's gonna involve a lot more digging and that's all I'm saying. And so I think we've gotta go through a thorough vetting process to make sure we know everything inside out. And we need to know our financial standing. So that, with that said, I think, you know, you can take your time. If you don't have the time to do that thorough vetting, then you need to take your time and bring it back when you do. So maybe after August, we'll know better where our financial standing is at. Then you, we can, it'll make a lot more sense. And then at that time, we can better assess the situation with our, you know, once and tax and whether or not we have it. And then, then it'll make sense, do we have, are we gonna be able to afford the manpower that you will bring back and tell us how much of that manpower and what kind of department these cities have, whether they have a separate department that, that will, you know, monitor or administer or collect taxes and whatever. Yeah, I'm just making it up, but you know what I mean? So, so I, I would like to, out of respect for, I forgot who brought the S T R up. But then I think, you know, that person wants to think about bringing more revenue. We will not disregard any of those ideas of bringing in more revenue. But we just need time to thoroughly investigate and then bring it back for further discussion. Then we, maybe we'll be able to vote then. So do we have a second?
Councilmember Nguyen withdrew it.
I like, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the council in consensus, consensus of, you know, take a deep look into this and then bring it back later on. But, you know, I totally agree with the mayor that he has the excellent idea that, you know, why take action right now? So, you know, if, I don't know that if you're, is that a motion or not? I think that, you know, we shouldn't take any action tonight. And then, you know, when staff ready, then they can always bring it back.
Yes, for clarity first, Councilmember Monzo.
There is a motion, I made a motion. Right now, we're requiring a second because Councilmember Nguyen withdrew his second.
Okay, so let's, so Monzo has a motion on the table. Is there a second to that motion? I think we need to get a second or not. Is there a second?
Is there a second on the motion?
Second it.
All right, so we have the, we have the, we have the, we have the motion and a second that asking our staff to do a resource and then come back in a later time. Am I correct?
Okay, that's fair.
So the motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Doe, with the directions provided to staff, without going into all the details, but providing staff direction to conduct the research as mentioned earlier and then bring back to the city council in the future and after August. And we have the voting module up for council to vote. We need one more. Councilmember Hall, if she can.
All right, vote please.
It's not working. It is not working. What is your vote and we'll include it?
Thank you. So the motion passes three zero with two abstentions by Mayor Ta and Councilmember Nguyen. Motion carries three two.
All right, so next item, result of reserves related to commercial cannabis regulation in Orange County city, I have to excuse myself because information in a report that had a potential location that really close to my home. And vice mayor, Monsieur will share this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So staff, wanna give us a staff report on this?
So, once again, this was a, it's a staff report that was put together by our management analyst, Ryan Sales, who cannot be here, so I will be filling in as well. So a couple of months ago, back in April, rather, we had a presentation from Shrine Group, which is a cannabis retailer looking to potentially open a cannabis retail opportunity in Westminster, in which we currently do not allow that type of, that type of business. And so some of the discussion in April resulted in potential revenues to the city as well as, you know, the potential location and why they wanna be in Westminster, some of the benefits that would, you know, that would contribute to us financially. And so more addition, more information was requested from the city council regarding their particular operations, but also in a larger picture, the research related to commercial cannabis in other Orange County cities. So, so again, Mr. Sales conducted research of the other cities and compiled a report in which, in which in the Orange County cities, operation of all types of commercial cannabis businesses is prohibited in, in all except five cities. So in the five cities that currently allow commercial cannabis, those cities are Costa Mesa, La Habra, Stanton, Santa Ana, and Irvine. Irvine's the only city in Orange County that allows only one non-use, non-retail use, specifically cannabis testing laboratories, but not retail uses within the city. And the rest of the cities, the other four cities, allow both retail and non-retail uses. And so there's a table that's also attached to the staff report that outlines the, the fundamental regulations in each city. And it specifies if commercial cannabis activities are allowed or prohibited. So the ordinances that restrict the operation of commercial cannabis businesses have generally similar language. And then the ordinances that permit operation of commercial cannabis businesses, they vary more significantly with differences in their regulation, their application process, and their tax rates. And some of those differences are further described within the, within the description column of the table in your staff report. The municipal code sections and associated webpages are also referenced. And those links can also be provided. They're also included, hyperlinked on the, on the electronic version that's on the website. And that's really just a brief overview of, of the research that's found.
All right, thank you, city manager. I'd like to open it up to council for any questions, comments. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, from the report that I know the W P D filed that there was no notable increase in crime or cause for service associated with the opening of retail locations. I believe that the council asked, you know, for the report, started report from different locations. And I believe that the police chief already came back with the report, some of them. And then we, the remaining, we still waiting for that. And I did request that if we have any more, we would like to have an update on that. I don't know whether you have any more answers from them.
Yes, council member, I believe an update was given to council maybe a month ago. We did get a telephonic survey done and there was no increases. It was just like we thought.
I thought that there, there are some of them have, have not answered, respond at the time. And then we still waiting. So from that time until now, we didn't get any more?
We did not get any more.
Of the responses from the location, from the, from the cities that we asked for.
That's correct, but we got the majority of them when we didn't ask them to do work for us on it. And we called and just got a verbal response, which was shared with council that the majority got back to us and said there was not an increase in crime.
You share with us at the meeting or via emails?
I believe that was an item of interest.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, anyone have any more question for you?
Councilmembers, any other questions for staff? Thank you, Chief. I think you did, just for the sake of the community. I think you just had looked into the, the areas where this particular business that did our presentation, the Shrine Group, that's the, wherever they have a location is what we, what you originally looked into, correct?
Correct, Vice Mayor.
And then, and did you happen to look into other cities, like the ones you're mentioning in our staff report? Costa Mesa, well, not Irvine, but Costa Mesa, La Habra, Santa Ana, as far as any crime related to those, particular to cannabis in those area, in those cities?
No, we didn't. The direction was for this particular company that the council was considering for business in Westminster. So we compared apples to apples and left it with that company, the way they do business, they do security.
So there's no general information, general knowledge of just on those, these cities in the staff report of any that you know of, just from your profession, that there's any correlation between increased crime and cannabis sales that you know of? I mean, just like in the, in the, in the trade, there's like, oh man, we've seen enough tick. I know you guys have some sort of.
At, at one time, yes, in the beginning. But as security measures have increased, I've not really heard much of that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you, staff. I mean, if there's no other questions from council. I think that, again, this is one of those items that, that, that I feel, strongly feel that we can afford to just say no to. That I think we need to look at every aspect, every, every possible way that we can generate more revenue. And this, as council may know, that this new cannabis industry is generating quite an extensive amount of new revenue for cities. And, and some cities, they're, they're putting this revenue to good use. Some cities also earmarked as a portion of that revenue for, for, for safety, for the police department, to be able to use, if they need to use some new tools or just have special task force just to monitor these in this industry. These monies, monies are being used for multiple areas of the community, for their parks, for beautification purposes, for city services. For many, many that they're putting to good use. And I think we all know that here in Westminster, we're in dire straits as far as just generating revenue, just keeping a flow. I mean, for many, many years, our city has just been, just getting by, just getting by and not really doing more. I mean, we've been in an economic boom for years and in our city, we really haven't seen that, the economic boom that others, other communities are seeing. But I think at this moment here, I think we need to, I feel that we need to set up a platform for community input. I think we need to give the community an opportunity to express their opinion on, on this matter. I think this is a big, a big decision that I think the community has a right to, to voice their opinions, their concerns. And I think we need to create that, some sort of online survey, some education for the community. Just, and just give, give the community, I don't know what other kind of way do you think, city manager, that we can set up some sort of platform for the community to look into, weigh in. Besides, I mean, there's not gonna cost a ton of money.
It seems to be the hot topic of getting community input.
We're trying to do more with, with very little.
And, and I, and I will, and I will say, you know, I will, I will preface it this way. You know, our staff is very capable, but whenever we have these additional special projects, it does impact our ability to do our day-to-day work, which we know is necessity. But that being said, we, we can certainly do an online survey. We can certainly, you know, have, we can hold, you know, we can hold community meetings, kinda like what we do with, you know, when we did redistricting, for example, or like the Liberty Park outreach, things of that nature. It will, I, I can't say that it will be seamless because again, our lack of staff. Generally, for something substantial, for a substantial outreach effort, for it to be efficient and, and actually gain the momentum that you'd like it to, it does require an outside agency to perform that, which does cost money, unfortunately. But it really just depends on the desire of this council and the level of participation you're seeking. So again, we can always start off with online surveys. We can, you know, we can hold community meetings regarding, you know, just again, town hall type meetings, specifically for this, you know, start off one in each district. But again, it would require staff, staff time. And I caution, I always caution that because we are trying to operate just on day-to-day, just the day-to-day.
I mean, considering the, I mean, with this, the report that we got, the presentation we got from the Shrine Group and the possible revenue that this would bring. Is it possible for you to bring us back at a, maybe at our next meeting? If you can just look into what it would cost for us to hire a firm to do an in, in a real in-depth research and outreach, what, what that would cost? And then also. And then also, if it's not too much trouble, maybe just start an online survey? Something that, you know, is not, yeah.
I'll, I'll look at what, I'll look at what Huntington Beach did, because I know that they, they did an outreach effort for their, you know, for them. And, um, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look and poke around and see what I can find out. But yeah, it, a, you, we would need, if we wanted to have this done right.
Yes.
And with consistent momentum.
Yeah, if you can bring us, just bring the council back, uh, that, what it would cost. I think it's, it's something that'd be a good investment, considering the, the staff. I mean, the, the presentation, they, I think they said two point, it's over two million, an increase that it would increase year after year, right? So I think that would be a, a good investment, um, to do, but in the meantime, just.
Okay, and then it's so, and as far as the, um, outreach as well, um, the, we can, we can certainly get quotes. The quotes would be, the pricing would be contingent upon how extensive we want it to be. So the number of meetings, the, you know, that type of things.
Okay.
So, um, so we'll, we'll take a look at different options, um, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll try to come back to it on the 10th. We do have a loaded agenda on the 10th.
Or maybe after that.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
So that's, uh, I'll go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say that, um, I'm glad you came up with that idea because I agree with you. Um, I think we need to now ask our constituents and see how they feel about the subject matter. Um, however, I'm, I'm requesting that number one is that you remember, um, that we've got, um, in, in our city, we've got a mix of the elderly who are not internet savvy and, you know, and then we've got, you know, maybe the elderly that are savvy. So please keep that in mind and see if you can do something that, that will serve both communities. Um, as a, you know, as a whole, and, uh, so that we're not distancing the other. Um, so that, that's a good idea, but if we can reach out to them and we can make sure we, you know, give them the ability to come and have a, I think the traditional way, I mean, I like that, it shouldn't cost very much. If you do the, uh, town hall type of meeting. Um, and if they want to, if they want to do that online, they could. Uh, if not, they want to come face-to-face, they could. Uh, I know that, but if you're going to be doing anything else, I don't know how you're going to reach them.
So in the, when we've done outreach, um, in the last couple of years, as far as gauging what, uh, what the community's priorities are and, and mailers, I want to say it costs us about, back then about $12,000 to mail out a, um, I think it was about an eight and a half by 11, um, double-sided flyer. Um, and that's, you know, again, the cost of postage and inflation. Um, that's always something that we can consider is mailing as well. Um, we did get a lot of responses back when we did, um, you know, have those type of mailings and people were mailing back the responses. So that's always an option as well, but keep in mind postage.
Hmm. So, uh, we need a mo- that, well, we asked my motion to bring what we spoke about.
You know, given, given that, uh, staff time, your staff is overwhelming with, uh, the workload. And, uh, you know, looking at the 33, um, businesses, uh, 33 cities, there's only five, uh, allow, and then 28, um, do not allow. And, uh, by looking into the, um, you know, um, survey or input from the community, I know that's, we also imposed, uh, more, uh, revenue, I mean, more of the financial, uh, burden on, on the city. So at this point here, I would think that we, uh, should take no action and, um, continue to monitor if there are a number of, um, cities, uh, uh, you know, agree to this. I'm sure that if it is, uh, um, an advantage, I'm sure that the city will take a look at that. And let's say we choose to, to like 10, then we know exactly that, you know, it is something right, that, that people moving, you know, forward, so forward to that. Uh, so, you know, my, my take is take no action at this point.
Okay, I have a mo- that's my motion.
Can I say something real quick?
Go ahead, customer dough.
Um, you know, cannabis is, uh, legal in California and it's many city, um, have allow cannabis to be sold. Um, and with this particular, uh, type of business, uh, bring, could bring a potential $2 million to the city. Um, that's very, uh, appealing. It's a totally legal business. And, but I, I, um, I support the, the community outreach idea from, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Menzo. Uh, one thing about, um, cannabis, especially marijuana in the Vietnamese community, it's, uh, it can be, um, misconstrued. We call it khang sa, which, which, uh, traditionally it's been, can be, um, labeled and regards are very dangerous drugs. Um, back in, back in, uh, Vietnam. So the community outreach and, and trying to educate, uh, Vietnamese-American population to support this type of, uh, business in our, in our city is very important. Because it can be misconstrued, as well, the city allows, uh, illegal drugs to be sold. So, um, now we, we, we need to figure out a way to tailor that approach so that we can reach out to everybody, um, uh, in English and as well as, you know, Vietnamese, so. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with customer dough. It's, it's not just Vietnamese, uh, communities and the Hispanic community, especially the old. I think it's the, the older generation. I know because of my parents, when you say that word is like you're, the stigma is you're a bad person. And there's not, I mean, there's just a lack of education, um, the lack of, of information. It's, uh, you know, doesn't get it, doesn't get out to those, to that, um, older generation. And, um, this, there's a lot of studies that have been com- completed as far as the medicinal use, uh, the medicinal, um,
Benefit.
Benefits of it. So, yeah, I mean, we need to really look into it. It's, um, $2 million game plus. I'm pretty sure that our city can use that kind of money, that, that additional revenue to be compared to good use. So, um, thank you. Do we have a second? No second? Okay, motion dies, no second. Next.
I propose, um, uh, we take no, no action at this time so that we, uh, you know, and, and the city, uh, the city measures and staff, uh, keep looking out for, you know, number of cities whether they are looking into this, uh, measure or not.
All right.
I, I, I would, uh, make a motion to, uh, to do the, you know, similar to your outreach, but try to see if the community support that type of, uh.
Well, I think that would be part of it. That would be a question.
If, if, if that is, if that is your intentions for the outreach, then I, I would second that.
Yeah, that's for sure. That's the intention of how the community, give the community a platform. To, to express their opinion if they would support it or not, and, and also to learn about it and the potential about it. And that's the whole, that's the whole gist of it.
I, I'll second that.
Yeah, I just, I just want to be, yeah, I, I definitely just want to be clear, um, the, the city can't advocate for or against the particular case. And then it still has to go to planning commission at some point, so we don't want to be in a place of bias or prejudice. But yes, the outreach effort would be to, to solicit, to solicit the community's input and whether they are interested in this, if that's your desire, but yes.
By education.
It's part of it, part of it is education as well, because you can't solicit input without telling them what it is.
Talking generally, we're not talking about application.
Yeah, it's just.
And may I ask if you do the community outreach, is there a financial associate with that or, uh, staff?
That, that will be, that will be, so obviously cost of doing business, if staff goes out there, it's going to be us on overtime and, you know, and, uh, there's a cost associated with that, right? Um, if we, but that's why, um, if we're going to look at a firm, there's a cost associated. So right now, the direction is to look into what that cost could potentially be. Um, and if it's, if it's not the council's desire to move forward at a late, you know, at, when we come back with this item, um, with a particular company, it's council's desire that staff conduct this. Um, it would just be part of, you know, again, what staff costs are, plus mailers, survey, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever those could be.
So you're going to, you get this, the, the conversation is the staff's going to come back at a later time with the, a cost, a number of what it would cost to hi- hire a company to do, uh, an extensive, an in-depth, um, community outreach. That's where, that's where staff's going to come back at a later time.
That's the motion.
And education, right?
Yeah, well, the education component is part of the outreach.
Can we?
Yeah, because a lot of people, a lot of Vietnamese people don't understand the, they, there's a stigma with, with marijuana. Or, you know, uh, while we might know, uh, there's the medicinal purposes to it, but I don't think it's general Vietnamese population know that. And so we want to make sure we all understand, we are all on, on the same page when we make a decision.
Yeah, and that, and that's part of, that is part of the, that is ultimately part of the outreach. Because we're not just going out there like, hey, do you want marijuana, you know, do you want weed in the city? Um, so it, it, it does have to be structured in a, it does have to be structured in a way that, um, does have an educational component. Those components would include what our current law is and then what it is that, you know, this council is, it's ultimately this staff report rehashed into layman's terms.
And can you repeat the motion again, please?
City manager, can you help out with that one? Because.
Right, let me, let me put my clerk cap back on. No, so the motion, okay.
So it would be, um, it would be to include research, um, on the outreach, uh, the cost of, uh, survey and the cost of mailers and, uh, firm, um, and bring back to council.
So it's not a community outreach yet. It's just that the, the, you guys are going to do the homework.
So it's, it's, we're not, you're not authorizing outreach yet, but it, it, it would be, it would be recommended that you, if you want me to look into costs, um, to take that action to let me move forward with looking at costs. And then when I present whatever those costs would be, then council can make a decision on what you would like to do in terms of who's going to, going to do the outreach.
Yep, so that's the motion. And I think council member dough seconded.
Yes, thank you. So the council member was made by, uh, Vice Mayor Manzo, seconded by Council Member Doe.
Let's do roll call, please. I think we, we need to do roll call. Yeah.
No more touchscreen?
I, I only heard that this was going to be done this way tonight as we came in. So, yeah, because we're doing virtual meetings, we need to do it by roll call.
Okay.
Right, we could, we could do it this way, but, um.
So I have been making the announcement of the council's vote, um, what that final vote is.
We still, roll call is a, is calling the name and then the vote, so we have to follow that process.
Okay, ready?
Yeah, ready.
Council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho? Yes. Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Manzo.
Uh, council member win?
Oh, I'm sorry, council member Nguyen.
Abstain.
Thank you, and Vice Mayor Manzo.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries, uh, three zero with one abstention and one absence.
Yeah, can we please call back the mayor, mayor Tom?
And actually, as the mayor comes back, um, and, and I apologize because I, again, I wasn't aware we were going to go to this electronic voting tonight. I would like for the council to take a, a roll call vote on the, the public hearing item 4.1. The other ones were just, uh, there was no action of significance on those. But on 4.1, that is the first reading of an ordinance, and I'd appreciate if we could take a roll call vote on that.
And we read, you, um, read back how we voted. I think we all voted.
So the motion was, uh, for that item was made by Council Member Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo, and, um, with, uh, 5-0 vote, uh, for an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, adopting an amended military equipment use policy for the Westminster Police Department. And that was to introduce the ordinance, read by title only and wait for the reading. Council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Hold on a second, uh, what is the item?
This is, I'm re- redoing the vote on 4.1 because we need to do roll call votes.
Okay, that was a public hearing.
Okay.
Apologize, we, you, you missed the last time.
Yes.
Because we are still virtual, um.
Okay, got it.
The city attorney has suggested that we.
It was 5-0.
Right.
Uh, I'm sorry, council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Nguyen?
Like I said, I need to know what my vote is. What was it before?
It was a 5-0 vote.
It was an I. It was a yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries by roll call vote, 5-0.
Yeah, and let me just clarify for the record, teleconference meetings require a roll call vote. Um, we're operating under the emergency declaration still, and that's where we're having the Zoom participants and such. So we're still subject to that requirement, as long as that's still in effect.
Right, thank you so much for that. Uh, so next item, city Westminster strategic plan and update, six month objective.
Second.
Right, we have motion and, uh, second to prove.
Thank you, that motion was made by Council Member Doe and seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo. Council member, and that was, uh, for the strategic, uh, plan and update to adopt the six month strategic objective matrix for June 20, 2022 through December 1st, 2022. Uh, Council Member Doe?
Yes.
Thank you, Council Member Ho?
Reporting on the strategic plan adoption.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo? Oh, Council Member Nguyen. I'm so sorry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
5-0. Motion carries.
Thank you, uh, next item, 5.4, revision to city council meeting schedule for remand of 2022.
Before, uh, we go on, I, I, I'd like to clarify with, um, the city staff here. Cancel regular meeting of August 24th, but then the next item was, the next line said cancel regular meeting uh, for November 23rd, which is second meeting, and then hold it on November 30th, which is the fifth, uh, Wednesday. So this is not a cancel, but it is a postpone or a move for the following week. Is that correct?
So, yeah, so it's moving to the following week, week would, so you would be, you would still have to cancel that meeting.
Yeah.
And you either hold a special meeting on November 30th, or you adjourn the ninth to the 30th.
Yeah.
But you still have to cancel the 23rd.
Oh.
It's, it's just a, it's a technicality, but, but basically, basically, we're looking to still have two meetings in November. And that's only because there's a lot of time in between that first meeting in November to the, you know, the installation of the new council, which is the first meeting in December. And that's not until like December 14th, which is, you know, at that point, if there is business that, that I would like this particular council to still, uh, participate in, um, you know, just depending on what happens with the election. Um, I just want to make sure that we have that meeting in order to allow this council to, you know, move forward with wrapping up some of your business, because some of, some of you may not be with us in December.
I move to approve.
Second. All right, we have the motion and, uh, second to prove this item.
Thank you, that motion was made by Council Member Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta to cancel the regular meetings of August 24, November 23rd, and December 28, 2022. Mayor Ta to cancel the regular meetings of August twenty four, November twenty third, and December twenty eight, twenty twenty two, and adjourn the meeting on November ninth, or regular adjourn meeting on November thirtieth. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you so much. Next, we have item five point five, budget adjustment for traffic signal maintenance.
Do we need a staff report?
It's a, it's a, up to the city council?
Can you give us a brief you know, report on that?
Good evening, mayors, vice mayor, and council members. Staff requesting the additional one. This, this is for the traffic signal maintenance contracts. We're using this contractor to provide us the services and support for their four five freeway construction project, as well as the sewer project along Westminster on the west side of the city. So with that additional services that we go over the, our annual budget, so staff requesting additional forty thousand dollars to cover the cost, but these, these costs have been built to those agency already. So these, you know, we will have reimbursements. So, so it's no additional cost to the city, but this, we just added more to the budget so we can cover the costs.
Okay, thank you. And I move to approve a budget adjustment.
Okay.
All right, we have the motion and second to approve this item.
Thank you, mayor. And that motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo to approve a budget adjustment in the amount of forty thousand dollars to gas tax program contractual other from the gas tax program IGVT, I four oh five reimbursement for traffic signal maintenance. Councilmember Doe? Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you. Next item, five point six, amendment number one to Raymond with Placeworks for as needed professional planning services to support implementation of the Westminster mall specific plan.
Staff report.
Honorable mayor, vice mayor, and members of the city council. This item is the consideration of an amendment to an existing professional services contract with Placeworks, which is a planning consulting firm to finalize and implement the Westminster Mall specific plan. The original agreement with Placeworks was approved by the city council in two thousand eighteen after staff conducted a competitive process using an RFP format. In two thousand nineteen, the firm facilitated multiple community meetings with residents, property owners, and other stakeholders in order to develop a vision for the future of the use of the mall site. And during the pandemic, Placeworks worked collaboratively with staff to prepare a draft specific plan that incorporates the key components of that vision developed by the community. This includes creating a sense of place, providing open space, including parks, trails, and other green space, providing affordable housing within that development, and preserving a retail component in order to support the economic growth of the city. The draft of the Westminster Mall specific plan is scheduled to be released for public review next month. And then we expect that the city council will hold its public hearing tentatively scheduled for October. The subject amendment to the agreement with Placeworks will provide the planning support necessary to complete the draft and for the planning services that we will need in order to implement this specific plan, such as conducting stakeholder meetings, performing site plan, design, peer review, and preparing any amendments that will be necessary to the specific plan. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute this amendment to the agreement with Placeworks. It would be for a period of five years in an amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over those five years. The annual amount will vary depending on the work needed to be done during that year. And of course, this amount is an estimate, and some of the funds may not be expended if the need is less than anticipated. That concludes my summary of the request, and I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
I want to thank you, our interim community development director for your report. I just had a question that, so in the year twenty eighteen, our city council, we all, we already approved amount of two hundred and eighty three thousand. So according to this report, we go to increase additional probably more than a hundred and fifty, right?
Yes, for the, for the current fiscal year?
Right.
Yes, because this is the end of the, of developing the specific plan. But there are still more steps, and it has taken a, a lot of meetings and things like that that have been occurring over the year. In the eight months that I've been here,
Right.
we've had meetings with the developers, and I mean, property owners and meeting with Placeworks and and in developing this specific plan.
Okay, so I understand. So did we spend all the money that we already approved in twenty eighteen?
Yes, yes, over the last
Okay.
so many years.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
I have a question. So you said for the next five years, so is that, you anticipated taking that much longer to complete?
What's going to happen in the next five years is going to be very exciting. When we get the specific plan finished and presented to, and, and approved by the council, that's when we can start working with the developers with their plans on how they're going to develop that, the property based on the specific plan requirements. So Placeworks as the, as the group that helped us develop the plan will be a partner with us as we evaluate and work with the developers on their plans to make sure that it's consistent with the specific plans, plan, and, and that's because we want to maintain the community vision of those components such as, you know, the affordable housing, the sense of place, the retail component, as well as the providing the open space.
But it's not, it may not necessarily take five years to complete?
It may not. But it, it's going to be dependent on what they bring to us and, you know, where they are in their process. But I can tell you, they are very interested in, in reviewing and seeing what's in the, the specific plan and how it will apply to their properties.
How, how far are we with, how far are we currently now with this specific plan?
Within, before, we anticipate that by August fifteenth, that we will be able to present it to the public. And then there's going to have to be a public review period along with the environmental documents. And then it would go to the planning commission and then to the council at, at public hearings.
All right, thank you.
Questions? How did we come up with this dollar amount per on pass?
It's, it's. Well, it's, it's an estimate based on what we worked with Placeworks to say, okay, what do we expect would happen during the next several years? And we expect that the first year, it's going to be a little bit more, and then it'll, it'll be probably, my, our estimate was a hundred and seventy thousand this year, this fiscal year, which is in, in the budget, in the economic development budget. And then probably a hundred thousand the next year, and then it'll decrease from there because we expect the activity to be, you know, to initiate as, during this year and the next year. And then hopefully, it'll, it'll start, you know, we'll start projects and we'll see more activity depending on the, the, the property owners projects that they bring to, to the city for review.
I have another question, sorry, mayor. This is for the economic development account. How much, do you know how much is in that account?
There's about six hundred thousand dollars in contractual services in that account. This is just one piece of that.
Yeah, so we're, I, I add a four hundred and fifty, what that was?
No, no, the four hundred and fifty thousand is over a five-year term.
But that's coming from the economic development.
It would be budgeted annually, and we'd have to review that annually.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
But I don't think we get more money going into that account, economic development.
I would.
It dwindled over time. I mean.
Are you asking what the balance is in, in the, in the account itself? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, you answered, but I was just saying that even if you budget it over time.
It, yeah, it, it would either have to come out of that account or be part of the general fund. However, based on, depending on what this, what, what we're doing with Placeworks, we may be able to be reimbursed for a portion of that through the fees that we charge the developers. It depends on, on exactly what we're having them do. And if it's related to a specific project, then it can be incorporated into the fees. That's one of the things that's in the specific plan. That's discussed in the specific.
So Placework, Placeworks will provide, they'll be responsible for working on the Westminster specific plan for that amount, but over five years? It's gonna take them five years?
No, the, the specific plan itself is something that we are nearly complete.
Okay.
And then there's, there will be some portion, portion of that related to if we have stakeholder meetings or we have other changes that have to be made because we have public input and we, we need to change the document some. That's not going to be the bulk of this. The bulk of this is going to be, once we have it out, then the developers will come and will want to review their projects, and they'll help us in that review. And that's the portion that we may be able to get partially reimbursed.
I see. I remember we spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the EIR.
Yes.
And is, that was, that's gonna be reimbursed also, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That EIR is another portion of that. And we did get a grant for reimbursing us for, for those costs.
We did?
Yes.
Did we get a grant for this too? Can we work on getting one?
This portion, yeah, it was a planning grant, and it was really focused on the bigger elements like the housing. We had one for the environmental review. And then we have one that has a little bit for the environmental review and some for the housing element. So we are, we do pursue them when we can find them.
Well, going back to my original comment about the Economic Development Fund, I, I just know it dwindles, it goes down. I know what goes into it. I know what we, what went into it in two thousand seventeen, when, eighteen, when I helped grew that to twenty two million dollars, and then it just went down ever since. I mean, it went to good use, but I'm just wondering, when you say you pay it over time, are we gonna have any money in there for you to pay in, in five years? I doubt it because there's only six hundred thousand. And it's gone down from from twenty two million.
Yes, I, I want to follow up the question from Councilmember Ho. I really want to ask either the city manager or any department head, over the top of your head, what source of dollar that our city, we allocate in that account, I mean, economic development, is that by, by fees from big project or from any other source of income? Yes?
Most, most of the income came from sale of land.
Okay.
We have about six million dollars in there currently. And right now, most of the revenue going in is either reimbursements, the grant revenue or interest.
That's good. Appreciate that, yeah.
So there's six million in there currently?
Six million?
That's what's in the contractual expenditure budget. That's not what's in the table. That's why I was trying to clarify. I know the part that I put in, the part that she puts in.
All right, well, that number sounds better than six hundred.
I'm sorry.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and second to approve this item.
Thank you. And that motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Ho, and that is to authorize city manager to execute amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Placeworks to provide as needed services related to finalizing and implementing the Westminster Mall specific plan in an amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand over the five-year term of the agreement. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you. Number five point seven, amendment number two to Raymond with Cheryl now for technical and analytical services.
I'll approve.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and second to approve.
Thank you. That motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Doe to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number two to the professional services agreement with Cheryl Knott for technical and analytical services in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand for the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three fiscal year. Councilmember Doe? Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
All right, so next we have commission and committee items. We continue, seven point one, continue from July fifteen, twenty twenty two meeting. feasibility study for potential location number one, G Monument. So I don't think we need a staff report. Am I correct? So all members of the council, we already discussed this item last meeting, or if?
So.
Yes, mayor.
All right, so staff report?
No, no, I have questions.
Okay, please.
Okay. Just so that, you know, before we vote, I, again, I want to clarify myself. You know, I have to know what I'm voting for. I have a little concern when I receive an email from from one of the committee member, which is Mr. Robinson. And you stated that you want to resign from the committee. And you know, I understand if you resign committee because of different reasons than, you know, family or you know, works or whatever reason that I understand, but reading your email here, you said that the committee did not follow and honor the task put in front of us. And you go on and say, you know, is the the history, about the history of it. And last, our last meeting here, we you know, I abstained my vote for the reason, but last meeting here, we decided, council decided to vote for the depiction of the design. And the decision based on the condition that both of you, Mr. Huang and Mr. Robinson, agreed to that. I didn't hear a solid agreement there. That's why I'm kind of questioning about it. But was that, can I ask you to come to the podium, please? Is that okay or no? So I, I, I don't mean to come back this one, but I just want to make sure that, you know, the agreement, the condition, the approval was based on the condition. And the condition that you and Mr. Huang agree on putting on something, right? I, I don't remember exactly. But was that agreement still on, or is it okay to?
No.
Or no?
Okay, the agreement is on. The depiction and design is approved.
Okay, okay. That's all I want to clarify. Thank you very much.
All right, city council, any, any question? Any concerns or any? All right, city council, any any question, any concerns or any?
I just had a que, I mean, I kind of, I think where we left off last, last time was mayor had recommended set up a, I don't know how how this was gonna happen, but I think we were talking about community input, mayor, is that what you had? If I remember what you had recommended. So how was, how would that, what did we, how was that gonna look? I mean, how we, how we do that?
Ah, I don't know, I don't know the rest of the city council right now, but if, if the majority of the city council or if the rest of the city council approve with my recommendation, so then we leave that to our city manager. Because our city manager, I think that she will have her solution unless our city council will provide her with our proposal regarding this matter.
So yes, so where we left last meeting was that there was a discussion about community outreach in which I did say that, you know, again, our staff is capable, but we just don't have the time or the resources. That being said, same thing with any community outreach effort. We can look at, you know, a group that can do the effort. I would just need, I would just, again, need parameters on what kind of community outreach you guys would be looking to do and what we would be asking essentially.
No, I myself, I really don't think we need to drag this on simply because, you know, we made a commitment to, you know, I I think it was basically we we keep punting it here and there and we trying to avoid making a decision. And, you know, no one wants to drag this on, but I think it's, it's on us if we keep dragging it on. You know, we have to go the most roundabout way to make a decision. And that is not the committee's fault. It's, it's, it's on on us. So.
Well, I recommended, I mean, we have to, I mean, let's get down to the facts. We know for a fact, based on staff reports and and what our population is and how much parkland we need to have and how much parkland we're short of. I mean, I don't know if Jake or somebody can just tell me if you know off the top of your head what that number is and how how much underparked we are.
We are significantly under the recommendation of three acres, three acres per one hundred thousand, one hundred, it's either a thousand or a hundred thousand, one thousand residents. So well below that, well below the county average, almost at the bottom if we were to rank all cities.
Oh, that is pretty significant. I mean, we need to realize that this is a permanent decision. This is not a ten by ten little, you know, square that we're gonna take up. This is, this is huge. I mean, this is significantly, we know what parks, we just came from a park. This week, we had a grand ribbon cutting for new playground at Westminster Park. And I can't imagine placing something this large on a park. I mean, all our parks are are small. We're way underparked. Can you imagine placing something this large and impacting not just the people who would be using the park, but also the surrounding communities around the park? That is a permanent, permanent life change. I don't know about you guys, but I do not, I could not sleep well knowing that it completely changed the life of, than all the people who live around these parks. They would be coming out and just be hating life. They would be hating every single day that they wake up and look at it. They would be hating life that they were having impact with the parking around their community, around in front of their houses. This is a significant, significant decision to impact people's lives permanently. I've been supportive of this project. I think we've, like I said before, I've always wanted this to be in a collaboration with Arven Veterans, American Vietnam Veterans with the original Pungtri Victory Foundation, and that didn't happen. And I think that we've given an opportunity for the Arven, the Arven Veterans and and community members to have a place for input at the committee, committee meetings for the American Vietnam Veterans to have, have input, have be able to to look out for the, what is, what is right to honor American military contribution. So I thought that I have, but we have to really look at this and and we had, need to pick a spot, we need to pick a spot where it's gonna be the less impact on the community and where we're not gonna take up what little park space we have. Parks are, and you know, parks are, are meant for recreation. The, the Pungtri committee members know because they've realized that placing it at a public park puts the, the, puts the monument at risk of vandalism and the safety of this monument. Thus, that they know that and I, and I, and I agree with them that, that it would be impacted. Many community members have mentioned, you know, what would happen, the potential for, you know, the homelessness issue that that's around our parks, that they would love to have a monument like this where they can make a nice shelter for themselves around this monument. You know that we're gonna, that's gonna happen because it's happening now. That's a, that's just a no brainer. That's gonna happen. And and I am concerned about the, the integrity of the monument to keep it. We, this monument is supposed to last for a generation, to be there for, for the next generation to learn from it. You know, we're just, if you place it at a, a public park where it's gonna be vandalized, damaged, you know, how, so that's taken away from the, the, from what it's intended for, is intended there to, to, for the younger generation. So why not place it at a place where it's gonna be safe? It's gonna, this, it's gonna be safe from vandalism, it's gonna be safe from folks, you know, climbing on it, you know, homeless peoples living in it. So to me, it's still, no matter which way you look at it, you can tell yourself anything you want to tell yourself. But at the end of the day, it's safer at Westminster Memorial Park. I understand the committee, committee members don't want to see that. But that is, if you, if you, if you care about the, the integrity of this monument, that is the safest place. That's just, nothing's gonna happen to it there. At the memorial park, it's meant, it's, people go there to pray, people go there to honor those who, loved ones they've lost, they, they, it's a place of solemn sanctuary and and this is what this monument is supposed to be. It's supposed to be there to remember those who paid the ultimate price, to honor them and to read about the history of it. And no matter which way you look at it, that is the safest place. And they let, and and it's gonna, it's gonna not take away from the community. Public parks, they're, they're there for the, they're for recreation, but public parks and open spaces are there for the, the mental health, the social and economic vitality of the community. We need open space as much as possible. They're meant to be enjoyed, they're meant to go out there with their families and laugh and play and have a good time. And if you have, if you go to cities like, I mean, I'll use New York for instance, they have to search and search and search for somewhere where they can go and, you know, shoot basketball or, you know, roller skate, do whatever, play, you know, baseball, something. It's like here, it's the same thing. We're just so park insufficient. We need more open space, we need more parks, we can't take away, take away from the community. The Westminster Park, it's meant, we, we went there and it has, you know, the, it, it was designed and improved to, to help the people with disabilities to enjoy it. And then we're gonna place some, we're gonna place an obstacle in their way? I don't know. To me, it's not, it's not something I wanna, I understand that some people are gonna get mad at me, but sitting up here, you have to really think about the community is, all the community as a whole. You know, how is our decision gonna impact the whole community, the whole city? And this is, this is a permanent, permanent decision. And I don't know, but just I can't, I couldn't live with myself knowing that I, I, that I totally changed the, the, the life for the negative, negative to all the, any residents living around any public park. I just could not, I could not live with myself knowing that, that I made, I made their, their, their quality of life. I impacted their quality of life negatively. I cannot do that. So to me, if you want to make a decision of where to put it, if you do not, if you don't want to take the mayor's recommendation to, for public input, then I still stick to the memorial park.
So do we have any other comment from other council member?
You know, I think it's rather irresponsible of you, Mr. Monzo, to be making, you know, this statement now after the monument has been built or being built and about to be finished. And I think that I just want to remind everyone that we've already put a moratorium on, you know, on building monuments. And, you know, basically, if I didn't stand up to protect your, just to protect you, your, the Arven group as well as, and as well as the group that was involved, the American group to, to support you in, 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 in having this second chance, you know, that I, you can say that I didn't stand up for you, but I stood up and I, you gave your, your, your vote, okay, to put a stop to the other monument. And, you know, when, when the opponents put our faces on, on, on the U-Haul truck and rode around town, you know, I was very upset that they did so, stating what they stated, that we wanted, the three of us, wanted to just not build the monument, wanted to tear down the monument, Yik Sap, which is what would be the translation. With tear, we wanted to tear down the monument. So that was the way they put it. So I went on and I defended, I defended you and I stated that that's not exactly what we were doing. We were only trying to be fair. Okay, we wanted to have, to give the people a second chance and to want, to come out and and work together. And so they worked very hard together. And you even stated that you wanted to talk about, you know, you wanted to have a committee that's gonna look at all the parks, our, our parks, not someone else's parks. And I, I just think that to put them through this whole exercise to, to now it becomes a reality that you want to tear down the monument. I don't want them to say that, but that's exactly what is going on now.
Let me, let me say this real quick, since we're on, well, let me just say this because this is really upsetting me now. Is that, you know, we talk about, and we have veterans here in, in, in our presence today. Here we have, I'm gonna just use the Vietnam war.
Can I finish because I, I don't think, I mean, I already gave you.
You're accusing me of something.
Gave you time to talk.
Yeah, but you're accusing me of something.
You gotta wait time to finish.
Let me tell you something. You, you talk about people, people are gonna be telling lies about us. Here we have veterans who stood up to tyranny, who stood up to, against communism, who fought probably against a regime that was at the time more powerful. Here, these, these, these men stood up to that. And you're saying that we here at council can't even stand up to a bunch of lies? Here, these people stood up to communism. They're the brave ones. You're saying that we can't even stand up to lies, so that what makes us? We're a bunch of cowards? That we can't even stand up to a bunch of people telling lies about us?
Well, okay, I mean, I'm just.
I hate myself to say that I was so scared because somebody's gonna tell a lie about me. And here, I'm, I'm in the presence of people who stood up and fought in a war and I can't even stand up to a bunch of lies, then that would make me a coward. They want to say whatever they want to say about me.
That's okay. I understand, I'm just telling you.
I got threats again today about a recall. You know what? If you don't like me, don't vote for me. If you don't like my decision, go ahead and recall me, you know, see if I care.
Right, so I'm just saying that the park situation hasn't changed, okay? It didn't change overnight and that is a situation about being park deficit has been going on. And it's, it was like that at the time you decided to, to approve this, for our city to take on this project, for, to cancel the other. And so, you know, we as a council gave the okay, well, five out of five gave the okay for the other monument to be built. You understand the situation, why we brought it back and we took over, okay? I don't want to have to go back and, 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 and remind you, you know. But I'm just saying that let's, I don't want to have to keep bringing this issue back. I mean, I don't think that our constituents want to hear about it either. But it's when you, you know, punt it onto, you know, you go do the roundabout and I'm just thinking, you know, it, it, you, you, you have to, you know, be responsible. You have to be very, you know, you, 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 you never stated and you never stated anything about being park deficit or anything like that. That was the situation back then. You never brought that up. And then you, you, all of a sudden, at the very last minute in May, you said, oh, can you look into that and then decide that you're gonna go with maybe the few constituents that have pressured you? But I'm saying that I really don't want to, I'm gonna, I'm repeating, I don't want to keep having to bring back this issue or this, this agenda. But I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying that this is how things evolve. And we're, we're here because of what we, we, you know, gave the vote, what we did and what we, we weren't, we said, okay, I interviewed every single group and I even knew, out of respect for the US veterans, I did say that, hey, I'm going to keep, I, I may not vote for Freedom Park, but to say to have, to not be in any park at all, that is irresponsible. And so, like I said, you knew that in, in December. If you had, oh, sorry, last June. So if you said, if you had said, well, you know, we're at park deficit, so therefore we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna do away with this agenda and we're not gonna have it in any of our park. Okay, then that would have been a just different story. Now, they've moved on, they did what we said. You know, they worked together, they came to an agreement and then you, you make them go through that whole exercise and to, to, to come to a conclusion that you don't want it in any parks. So that's, that's, I just wanna, I just wanna give it a summary so that you can see if you can live with yourself.
Yeah, I could because that's what's called analyzing the situation and, and realizing that that, that I was, it was a mistake to think that I can, we can impact the lives of people that way. And with Westminster Memorial Park, they indicated that they would be happy to take it. They would be happy to, to pay for the expense of, of maintaining it, sixty-five hundred dollars a month. That's, it adds up. We, we're, we're just having a conversation about how. We, we're, we're just having a conversation about how, how, the economic situation that we're in. And here, you know that, that's, that's what happened with the Vietnam War memorials, that, that committee paid for the maintenance for, I think it was two years and then they disappeared. Imagine that, that, that this committee is gonna be able to continue to endlessly fundraise forever? For, fundraise for the rest, for, for generations so we can maintain this monument?
As you heard staff, you know, they're nowhere, anywhere near ready and they, they, uh, the memorial park people might have mentioned that they're interested just so that they could speed up their, um, permit. They're not even gonna discuss about the location or a contract to have this, uh, this monument on site until they have received their permit. So they're really gonna use this as a, a deleverage there. And yes, they did, if you, if you'd like to hear it from Adolfo again. And I, and I believe he, I remember the timeline. Uh, Adolfo mentioned that a year and a half before they're even ready and then on top of that, you have to add another three months to six months for the, the construction permit. Um, and so that's gonna take us two years. So to think that it, we're, we're trying not to drag this on and we're asking them to build something and we already gave the votes, all three and then we're, we said we're gonna look into a park and, and then all of a sudden you're gonna, you know, make them go get, you know, move it somewhat onto a cemetery and then you're gonna make them wait for two years. And, um, so, you know, it's very unfair, it's absolutely unfair. May I ask Mr. Adolfo, Adolfo, would you? Am I not right when I mentioned that it's a year and a half and then you add on another three months to six months? That's exactly what you said at the last meeting.
There is a, an ongoing general plan amendment process that started back in January and, um.
But nothing was done from January, from what I understand, I remember you saying, nothing was done from January until now, no movement, nothing. So, it, it doesn't mean that it's gonna be, it's gonna start moving again or maybe there will be another delay.
The planning process is, is very much a back and forth game and some of the times it's out of, most of the time, half the time, it's out of city staff's hands. There's, um, tasks that need to be completed by the applicant. So, it's been a back and forth as is with most development processes since January. A realistic estimate would be up to a year and a half, that we were not overpromising. And then that would lead to a subsequent agreement and then a subsequent application for the actual inspection of the, of the, of the monument on the site. Again, back to planning, back to some more back and forth.
Right, so that's gonna take us two years out. So, that I just don't see how that can be fair and if we wanna put this matter to bed, we need to make a decision and find a park for it.
I'm only one vote, so.
Oh, let me, allow me, I, I mean, I, I'm gonna just say the same thing that I say in the last meeting. You know, when we, um, vote to cancel the last monument to be built in Freedom Park, okay? As in all the veterans was very happy because they did not want anything more built in the veteran park, I mean, in the Freedom Park. And at that time, we have council members that facing, uh, recall effort by the people who tried to build the monument in Freedom Park. So the motivation was there, promise was made, okay? You make all the community member become excited, have hope. You form a committee. You form a park committee, unfortunately, it didn't, didn't have enough interest and then it died. So, um, yeah, to me, your words is all you got. You promised the community, this is what you wanna do. Right, wrong, I don't know, but you did, we did. And I remember, we, you know, we taken photo with committee member to, you know, to, um, and then people in the community worked on your behalf to uh, fight the recall because they speak Vietnamese and all the attack, uh, to the council member facing the recall was in Vietnamese. I remember I have to, um, agenda and a, a, an anti-Fit New Resolution to put, uh, an end to that. You know, it's, uh, it's difficult. You know, it, it's, it's a very difficult decision. But, you know, this is not the time to further divide this community, you know, we have, we have done so much, we spend so much time on this. We talked for days and days and hours. And at the end of the day, you know, it's, uh, it's not right. I mean, you know, they, they, the community, the committee has been working so hard with, uh, with opposition and then finally have that approved. And they have raised money. They have hope, they were excited and they never once mentioned what you promised, what we've promised them, they never. I haven't, I haven't heard anything from the, um, member of the community. So, I mean, you know, you, you have, we all have one vote. We all can, uh, cast the right vote, you know, according to what's right for us. Well, the community involve everybody. And a lot of, uh, a lot of people voice their cons, uh, support and a lot also voice their opposition. So, um, you, 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 we got elected by the people, so we cannot make everybody happy. But this is, to me, this is not about the battle. To me, this is a legacy of Vietnamese-American. We were given the opportunity to, um, to settle here. And it's gonna be something that we, our younger generation are gonna look at and remember our legacy here. That we work with everybody, build something so that it's not about, uh, it's not about the battles. To me, it's not about, about, it, it is about the battle, but it's just something that we can look at and say, yeah, the Vietnamese-American come here, contribute, make the contribution. And, you know, thanks, uh, the American people in this, uh, great city give us a small piece of land to build something so that we can remember our legacy. Uh, and then to me, and you know, I, I, I'll be grateful, yeah, to the resident of Westminster, we'll be able to do that. But, um, you know, our words is all we got. We, we promised the community, uh, the community that we're gonna do this for them. Okay, you, then to me, you know, if you, we change this midstream, it's, uh, it's not right. Maybe you should table this until the next, uh, council meeting before we cast a vote so we can have a chance to reflect. I don't want to point finger, I don't want to say anything that further divide uh, the, the council as well as the community. We have those who support and those who oppose and both side very emotional, same thing here on the city council.
Yeah, I agree.
You, you know, so I would, uh, make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Before we, before we vote, I just wanna point out a fact that, that I have been supportive of this issue, I expressed my, my original wish and I expressed that wish back then. But the fact of the matter is that when we, at the beginning of this process, at no time at all was there ever agreement about a, a public park at, at all. From the very get-go, there was never a conversation about a park. The committee was not tasked with rec, a, a park recommendation, they were tasked with the design and yet, the committee spoke about, uh, uh, and they also recommended a park, they came out of that committee. So they did not, they did not, uh, stick to what they were assigned to do and I, or nobody on this council that I know of ever agreed to a particular, not even a park. They, the, the commitment that we made, the commitment that I made and the support that I did was to, to create a platform for the Arvin veterans, of Vietnam, Vietnam-American veterans and the community to have a platform for input and design. That was the, the promise that we made and that promise was upheld.
You know, wait, maybe, maybe, um, you know, my memory didn't serve me right, but I remember that we, um, the council agreed not to build anything more monument in the Freedom Park. And we decided to form a committee, park committee, to make recommendation for any monument that might be allowed to be built in any park. Not just, uh, except Freedom Park. So, but I, and you know, knowing it now, comparing it before, the interest was of the, um, people in the community was, be part of the Quang Tri Monument. They did not think that it's important to be, uh, in that, uh, park's committee. Uh, and that's, that's caused the problem because when, uh, it's a decision to make the recommendation, we don't have the, that particular committee to make recommendation and we pawned it off to uh, parking wrecks and who also refused to do it. So we end up to the city council. So, um, a, and again, you know, just, uh, I, I, I think it's right now, it's just pointing this, uh, table until the next, um, meeting so that we can have clarity to think about what happened and whatever happened, happened, you know, whatever your thoughts.
But, uh, if I remember correctly, council member Do, we did have a recommendation from the Parks and Rec Committee, Commission. They, I think they mentioned the Civic Center. Correct me if I'm wrong, Vanessa, what was the recommendation? Civic Center, Memorial Park?
Yes, I think it was, and I believe I have it, um, private property, the Civic Center or, um,
Westminster Memorial.
Westminster.
Memorial Park.
Oh, specifically Westminster Memorial, yes.
That's where my, that's where, that's where my, that's where my, um, those three site, those three recommendations is where I cho, I, I agreed with Westminster Memorial Park. I didn't come up with it, that wasn't my, that wasn't something that I dreamed of.
It, it's understandable for the, uh, Parking Rec Commission to make the, those, uh, recommendation because they was not the one who promised the community.
Correct.
You know, and I, I don't, I don't blame the Parking Rec Commission for make that recommendation because they care. They, they, they understand the importance of taking park space, they understand, they get it. But that, they were not the council who make that promise to the community. You know, I'm, I'm, right now, I've maintained the, the, the promise that I make to the community that I do not want any politicize the Freedom Park, to build any, anything else in there because it's been, it's been manipulated so much. And this is, this is might be the last one that we ever have in, in, in this city. So, but, um, so, um, to that, I hope that answered your question, uh, Vice Mayor Manzo. Uh, I make a motion to table this until next, uh, council meeting.
So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna jump in on the next meeting part. So next meeting, we're, per the strategic plan, we're supposed to be talking about sales tax measure, which I would, um, I would say that it would be a very, uh, fruitful discussion. Um, and, and I would caution, you know, adding more to that particular agenda because, you know, we do have additional city business. If the council does not wish to do any action today, I prefer that we continue this discussion today, but if not, I don't recommend that we go to the August tenth meeting only because we have, you know, some very, um, important topics to talk about.
Well, thank you, uh, Madam City Manager, but I, um, next meeting, which is vote, there'll be no more discussions, just vote, so. And, and I think the council needs some time to have a clarity to cast a vote, so. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I want, if we're gonna wait until next week or next meeting to vote, I really want to see if we can ask our, our, um, either city manager or city, um, attorney to go over the, you know, the videotape or the archive of what we talked about when, when we came up with the idea, it wasn't me, but came up with the idea about, you know, having a committee to look at all the park spaces. So, that's still unclear in our, not in my mind. We made the promise that it's gonna be in a park, so I want that to be looked into and.
We have a, we have a, we have a, we just had, uh, Parks and Rec Director give us the information of what the.
Yeah, if I could clarify that, it was private land such as Memorial, Westminster Memorial Park, a new park, park, a new pocket park on land potentially owned by the city or, um, the Civic Center. So the one I was missing was the Pocket Park.
Pocket Park. Those were the, the task was for the Parks and Rec Commission to give us a recommendation and those are the recommendations. We're following our own direction, the Parks and Rec Commission gave us their recommendation. There was never, uh, that I remember, I could be wrong, that from the get-go, from the very beginning, there was never a conversation about a particular park or any park. The only conversation that I remember was that, uh, Councilmember Do and I, and I'm not sure about Councilmember Ho, but about not being at Freedom Park. That was the only conversation that I remember, that it was not gonna be at Freedom Park. There's a moratorium on the, on the, on, on a Freedom Park for, for new, new statues or new monuments. So the Parks and Rec Commission gave us their recommendation and that's where the idea of, of private land Westminster Memorial Park came from.
And that was really the concession, you know, to not have it at, um,
Freedom.
Freedom Park. And so now you got your concession and then you're not giving, you know, which is not right. Um, I just.
Right, so, um, uh, council, uh, I know that, uh, this is an issue that we all really, uh, passionate about it and, uh, member from the, uh, from the community, they really emotional about it. Uh, I think that we already witnessed, uh, many of, of members from the community, they came up and, uh, spoke emotionally and, uh, I mean, like, I believe, uh, five of us, we want to, uh, we want to give our best services to serve the community and we don't want to divide, we don't want to re, any division among the community, so, uh, Councilmember Do, he recommend that we, um, we defer to the next meeting for everything be cooling off. I know that Councilmember Ho really, really passionate about that. I myself and I think, I think the rest of us, we really want to support, we want to honor the sacrifices of our, uh, of our men and women, of our South Vietnamese heroes. So, uh, I know that you really passionate about it, but I'm not really sure whether or not, um, you willing to defer to the next meeting, so it's still.
I'll second that.
All right. All right, so we have the motion and a second on the floor, that we defer to the next, uh, meeting.
I'd like to, uh, make a substitute motion to that. As you mentioned, uh, with the mayor, that, uh, we witnesses that, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, community members came out and talked passionately, passionately about it. we witnesses that, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, community members came out and talked passionately, passionately about it one way or the other. And, you know, it's, it's very difficult for us as council members or the mayor to make decision when there are split, um, you know, um, ideas or, uh, opinions. I personally think that, you know, like I, I voted before, I personally think that, uh, the part, the, the, the project is, the monument is very, very large, is huge. Consider that this room is the, 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 the monument. It's really big um, to have. And I know that, uh, um, Rec, uh, Parking Wrecks Committee already recommend that, you know, to reduce the size, but, you know, uh, anyway, we, uh, so council already approved, uh, the design, uh, and, uh, the size of it at the last meeting. So I'm not going to talk about it. Again, I'm not opposed to the QT monument. But I would think that, you know, it is a community, uh, community projects. And wherever you place it, you know, is requires, you know, it will negatively impact some of those surrounding people living around that. So my personally, I personally think that we should seek for the input from the, um, from the community. So at this point here, I would think that we, uh, we should go out and seek for, uh, the community, um, you know, uh, inputs. And then from there, I think that, uh, the councils, uh, you know, based on the community input, we can make a decision very, you know, easily, you know, um, and, and we don't have to worry about, you know, whether we make a right decision or wrong decision or whatever it is. So, um, I would like to make a substitute motion to have, um, the, to have staff looking into this. And whether they want to do it in-house or they want to have a contractor to look at this, to do the community input, uh, is up to them. But I think it's fair and is, uh, a right thing to do. And we respect our, um, residents and the community. That's my motion.
All right, I, uh, second that, uh, motion because I think that, um, I think the community input are really important. If we, uh, receive input from the community, that community really want, uh, to place the monument in any park. So I think that I myself, I will listen to the community. So this is what I stand. So we have the motion, uh, we have a substitute motion and a second for substitute motion on the floor.
Yes, Mayor, so that.
Second, uh. All right, please. So I just, you know, I just wanna question Councilman Charlie Nguyen. Uh, do you really support this or you just, uh, just lip service?
Have you ever heard that I said no? I don't support that, uh, this monument? Have you ever heard that? That the answer for you?
Never vote for anything?
Oh.
Abstain.
Well, you can say whatever you wanna say, but I said that I am not opposed to the QT monument. That's it.
So you're gonna vote if we, if, uh, if somebody make a motion to, to scrap this, you're gonna vote for it?
I don't understand why you're sitting in this council and you ask that question. I have to vote either one way or the other. However I vote is my vote. You have to respect my vote as I respect.
Absolutely. I'm just, I'm just trying to see if you really care because you make a lot of inquiry.
I refuse to answer any more questions. Let's go on.
All right. So I see the council, I, um, I know that, uh, we, uh, we want to serve the committee well and it's kind of really late. So we hope that, you know, uh, we keep the meeting, you know, like, okay. So we have the motion and a second on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So the count, the motion, the substitute motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that is for staff to look into, um, contractor or in-house uh, to conduct community input meetings. Um, Councilmember Doe?
Before we vote, I have a question. So how, you're gonna, that, that's a motion to bring back again, a cost to what it would.
At this point, at this point, I feel like I'm just gonna be hitting up the same consultants and just giving, giving them a blanket, like, here are three different projects that, so.
Need to bid on.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, it's up to a city manager. The city manager can bring up all the option. And we go to decide what option go, but I, uh, I want to honor the sacrifices of our, uh, of our men and women, and I want to honor all the work from the QT monument. I think that, um, they have, um, dedicated time for, I think, more than a year. So I really want to honor that too, yes. Community input is kind of really appropriate at this moment. That's what I think.
Him here, I, I, I totally appreciate the QT committee for taking all the time and effort. Just because I don't, not voting the way you would want me to vote does not mean that I, that I think any differently. I respect each and every one of you. But you have the utmost respect from each and every one of you. And that is worth democracy. If you don't agree with that, if I'm gonna continue to get threats of recall, then so be it, you know? If that's what you guys wanna do, then do it. Um, but you know, this is, this is, this is why we're here in America for democracy. That's why we're, we all chose to come here. Some of us came here in different scenarios, but this is why we're here, because of democracy. And so many men have fought and died for democracy and, and we can't even uphold it here, then what the heck are we doing?
I think we have enough discussion. I call for the vote.
So we have the, we have the motion and a second.
Councilmember Doe?
I abstain.
Councilmember Ho? You know, I really feel that you're not sincere. I, I believe that, uh, this is just, um, a way of, um, maybe buying time or kicking the can down the road. Um, so, uh, I really don't wanna waste the city's money. So, um, I would say no. Please don't. Councilwoman Nguyen? Respectful, please.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
I didn't hear a vote from Councilmember Ho.
Say no.
Then no.
Abstain.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
So the motion fails. Um, we have two yeses, one, two yeses, one no by Councilmember Ho and two abstentions.
I'd like, I'd like to ask, uh, the city attorney for this, uh, outcome.
This is not a vote. Well, was there involving the expenditure of money? No. There's no expenditure of money, then, then a motion does not require, uh, a total of the majority. So in this case, you have two yes, one no and two abstentions, I believe. Yeah. So in that situation, the motion would pass if there's no.
I change, I change my vote to no.
Okay. Well, in that situation, now the motion fails. We have two.
All right, the motion fail. All right.
So the original motion is a, um, vote, uh, next, prefer next meeting, just vote, no, no more comments.
All right. So, uh, we go back to our.
Make the motion and votes.
Motion to defer to the next meeting. Am I correct? Okay. All right, we have the motion and a second.
Do, do we have a second on that?
Yes, we have a.
Who, who seconded?
Oh, second.
Thank you. So that motion was made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Ho? I mean, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho? Yes. Councilmember Nguyen?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Manzo? Mayor Ta?
Abstain.
If this is obtained, then this pass.
It would pass.
It would pass.
Okay.
Yep. On a, on a two yes and three abstains?
Yes.
That's what we, yeah.
Yes.
All right. All right. So, uh, next item, uh, we continue from last meeting, appointments to the youth committee for twenty-two to twenty-three.
Wish.
Brew?
Second.
We have the motion and a second.
The mayor, the motion was made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Yes. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes. All right. Next we have comment from City Council Agency members.
I'll go first. Uh, just wanna, once again, thank you, uh, city staff, your hard work, stay a plate. Uh, yesterday we got a chance to, uh, yesterday, right? Yeah, the, okay, okay. Uh, got the ribbon cutting at the, uh, the park, uh, beautiful playground. It's a state of the arts. The first, uh, shaded cover playground I ever seen. It's beautiful. Got a chance to try that zip line. It's pretty cool, yeah. So. Um, uh, again, it's a great job that, uh, the, that our city that come together and, and get something really nice for the community. So it's a, it's a team effort. So thank you very much for everybody. So have a good night.
I'll go next. Um, I wanna echo Councilmember Doe's comments. That was, that's, uh, an awesome new playground for the community. Um, it had all the ADA, you know, accessibility for the children and, and also the improvements at the bathrooms for, for those needing help, you know, to get, you know, use the restroom, uh, the parking, that park was, came out really nice and everybody, staff, everybody did an awesome job with that. And I look forward to for our next park to go through the same transformation and, and those are the things that, that give pride to our community, our residents to see that. Um, and we need to keep making investments in that, those type of projects in the, in our city. Uh, that's, uh, something that benefits everybody. It just makes everybody feel good to have that. It just, uh, to be able to use that. Um, I know, um, this is for council, something to chew on, something to sleep on. We have a very important decision to make our next meeting when it comes to, um, allowing our residents to, to vote on something that's gonna pretty much say if our community is gonna survive or not. I'm gonna say what I said again earlier. We up here, we need to show that as our, with all this talk about the, uh, honoring those who fought and died in war, those got, those men and our women stood up and fought for something they believed in. They stood up and there, there's, you think they're not scared? They were, they're, of course they're scared. They're can't even imagine being in that situation. But here is council, because of our, of any, any of us wanting to, to run for reelection or election, that we here cannot stand up to lies. Folks are gonna say whatever they're gonna say about us. Each and every one of us has people who are, that don't like, that they, they don't wanna, they don't support us. And they're gonna say what they're gonna say. Doesn't matter what we do. If, if, if any of us vote that the sky is blue, they're gonna say that it's red and we, we, and we didn't honor there. So we can't, we, we can't even have the courage to, to stand up to our political opponents with the lies that they, that they make about us. What does that say about us? The li, the lives of our communities at stake with our decisions. And we, we have a big decision to make next, our next meeting. We, as those veterans fought for freedom and democracy, let's us fight for democracy here on this council and allow the residents, uh, to vote the way the veterans fought for democracy in the, in a battlefield, we can fight for democracy here on the dais. So thank you.
I can go next?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, first of all, I would like to thank you all for being here at this hour, you know, um, I know that you care for the community. That's why you are here. And I appreciate for all those coming out and, and, you know, skip your mind. Um, I would like to thank, uh, Vanessa Johnson as well as the, uh, Park and Wrecks Committee and, uh, our city staff for working really hard, uh, for a couple of events. Number one is, uh, the series of summer events that happen every Thursday. I enjoy that event. I know that people enjoy, you can see that many people turn, you know, came out and enjoyed the event. So that's, uh, that's say something about it is, you know, right for the people here. The second event is that, you know, I enjoy, uh, attending the, uh, the ribbon cutting for the, uh, playground at the Westminster Park. It's marvelous. Uh, I want to thank you for that, um, you know, for the hard work that you have put in. And I know that you guys will, will continue to, uh, improve our parks, which, uh, our community needed. Uh, I, I appreciate that. Um, third, I have one request, uh, for the next meeting, if I would like to ask for the, um, the, the chief or, uh, the, uh, WPD to give the commu, uh, to give the council and also the community, uh, an update of what happened, the incident happened, uh, last week, uh, the homeless murder case. I know that you've been working on that and I think that, uh, there are some concern from the community. And, uh, I'd like to, you know, to have an update for everybody to understand of, of what we, we did and also calm down the community for, you know, for the things that we, uh, take action on. Uh, and, you know, you can take credit for what you have been doing, you know, and, and I think it's, uh, it's worth for you to spend a few minutes talking about it at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Um, okay, I'll go next. Um, yes, unfortunately I couldn't make it to the ribbon cutting due to my, um, my mother's health. Um, and, um, but I did get a preview from staff, Vanessa Johnson mainly. Um, and I really appreciate, I was very, very much, uh, looking forward to that. Um, but, um, I know that the, the ziplining, um, the ziplining is gonna be very popular. Uh, and I was very anxious to try it out to see how safe it is. I love ziplining. Um, I remember going, uh, traveling, can't remember where. But my very first time, uh, trying it out, uh, I, I was hooked after that. So when I learned at the preview that, uh, that was going in, I was like, oh, wow. So I'm gonna come back and try it real soon. Um, yes, the, uh, every Thursday event, I hope everybody comes out to support. Um, I know in the last two, uh, we've had, um, a very, I mean, outpouring of support from, from the people. Uh, not just the people of the city of Westminster, but the surrounding cities as well. So that means, um, people are really enjoying and looking forward to it. And I know this year, we, as I heard from staff, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that we didn't have any sponsors, correct? And our, our city actually wanted to keep up with that tradition. And, um, so we probably fork out all the expenses, but, uh, it's very worth it. Uh, otherwise we'd be disappointing a lot of people. So, um, tomorrow being Thursday again, uh, it's gonna be a movie, right? Can I have the name of the movie?
Sing Two.
Sing Two?
Sing Two.
Why these, all these movies? I, is it a Disney movie?
I think it's Pixar. Um, it's not Disney. Encanto is Disney.
Encanto, it's.
Illumination. Yeah.
All right, so.
Animals sing. It's entertaining.
Mm-hmm. As the last movie was. Thank you so much for doing all that. And I look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to thanks, uh, members. I, so I wanna thanks, uh, members of city council, our city staff and, and member from the community for, uh, being really patient. Right now it's already, uh, past midnight, so, uh, I, uh, so I wanna thank everyone. And, uh, our, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, August ten, twenty, twenty-two at seven P M. You need to join.